Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Englewood Cliff Mayor and Council. Today's date is June 14th, 2017, and it's 8:05 PM. Madam Clerk, please have a roll call.
Counselwoman Minnaversa?
Yep.
E. Park?
Here.
O.?
Here.
McMorris?
Here.
N. Park?
Yep.
Woo?
Here.
Our attorney?
Present.
Borough Engineer?
Present.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
And, uh, Martin?
Martin, just a minute.
Superintendent VPW and Clerk. Everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you. Please all rise for the platitudes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and universal.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. A former resident, Eileen Viola, passed away, and Judge Letty's mother passed away in May. Thank you.
Somebody else, Mrs. Chappell, she'll help us with that.
Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Okay, thank you. On June 2nd, I had the great honor of presenting the Chief for a Day proclamation to one of our young students at the North Cliff School, and I'd like to read the proclamation into the official records. Whereas on June 2nd, 2017, the Englewood Cliff Police Department will participate in the annual Bergen County Chief for a Day initiative, and whereas the members of the Englewood Cliff Police Department play an integral role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Englewood Cliffs, and whereas the mayor and council of Englewood Cliffs value the rule of law and support the Englewood Cliff Police Department in the execution of their duties, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities of law enforcement in their community, and whereas as an honorary Chief for a Day, Mia Piani, will learn about the inner workings of law enforcement and explore the important work that the Englewood Cliff Police Officers face on a daily basis. Whereas it is fitting and proper that the borough of Englewood Cliffs, along with our community, observe June 2nd, 2017, as Mia Piani Appreciation Day to honor her interest in law enforcement. Now therefore, I, Mario M. Cranjak, Mayor of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, on behalf of its citizens and Borough Council, do hereby proclaim June 2nd, 2017, as Mia Piani Chief for a Day. So, we had a very nice time at North Cliff School, and, um, we do that every year. We had correspondence, uh, that's listed on the agenda.
Any questions on correspondence?
Um, I just want to mention that there's a reference to Maserati North America. I had received a Warnak Notice, which is a worker reduction notice. Uh, there's two companies in that building, Ferrari North America and Maserati North America. Ferrari North America is remaining at that location, and Maserati is moving its workforce to Michigan. Uh, so, any questions? Okay. Before I speak about claims, I just want to mention a couple of things. There was a, uh, there was an incident at the school today. All the students, all the faculty, all the administration were safe. Uh, there were rumors running around. Uh, I called the chief to confirm that myself. I didn't hear directly from him until I called him, so that was confirmed by the chief to me. A couple of weeks ago, I organized another meeting with Public Service Electric and Gas to discuss our streetlights. I invited Counselwoman Minnaversa. He attended with me, and our Borough Administrator, Catherine Stineal, to discuss the, uh, the issues that we have with lights. We pay for light usage on the streetlights every month, uh, but we don't have any LED streetlights yet, which provide, uh, better light, uh, at a lower, uh, cost, although the initial cost is higher. And we wanted to see if, instead of replacing the high-pressure sodium light bulbs as they burn out after a year, year and a half, if they would just replace the heads with LED streetlights. And we were told that that's a, a future plan of PSENG, but it's not part of the standard package right now. So in 2018, that will become part of the standard package, and we're going to try to participate, uh, in that package. There's some things we might be able to do now with some of the floodlights in town, and, um, we're looking into that. But, just so you know, the, uh, the upfront, uh, cost of the, uh, LED streetlights are a little higher for PSENG. They actually own those. They're going to the, uh, the Board of Public Utilities to get permission to, to do whatever they have to do to make them part of their standard package. Uh, but those lights last, uh, much longer than high-pressure sodium, and there was another form of light bulb, which I think, I forgot the name of it. But, um, Catherine, did you want to add anything to that?
Uh, I believe you have to amend their tariff-
Right.
...in order to make it available to us.
Right, so that's what they're doing. Uh, Counselwoman Minnaversa, did you want to add anything to that?
You covered it, man. It's pretty accurate.
All right. Thank you for attending, by the way.
Thank you.
Uh, we, uh, we also had an Arbor Day celebration at those schools, uh, North Cliff School and Upper School. Flowers were planted, trees were planted, mulch was put down. Everybody was happy. The weather wasn't so great, so I thank, I thank all the volunteers who braved a, uh, a very cold May day. Um, I know Maria, Lauren, Carol, um, you were all there. I appreciate you doing that, and the children had a great time to, um, to learn how to appreciate the trees and the flowers. The, um, what, the thing I wanted to do now also is, because Andy Hippel spent a lot of time with us this week. He was here on Monday evening for about four hours, uh, speaking on the Woody Field Project. We, uh, at the end of that meeting, which was very, uh, he didn't want to grab the microphone. It was very successful in the sense that everybody got to voice their opinions. We had 22 public speakers come in. It was our second meeting, uh, on the matter. It was a special meeting devoted solely to the purpose of Woody Field. We, we discussed different options, different layouts, different features, parking, no parking, lights, no lights, artificial turf, uh, with a crumb rubber infill, with cork infill. Um, we, at the end of that meeting, we tasked Andy, and I appreciate you doing this so quickly for us, because we do want to accomplish things in town, um, we tasked him to, we're figuring out some cost estimates for, uh, doing, uh, some turf field with cork infill, uh, no crumb rubber infill. And, uh, since you're having such a long week and spending so much time with us, and I know you had another meeting last night in another borough, I'd like to move you up from the old business to now. Uh, you could give us your findings and then take off.
We have the, we have the question.
Which one?
The B side.
Uh, well, do with you. All right. Okay, well, yes, we're going to rest up as well, so you can just leave right after that.
Great.
Okay.
So, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, what I did was I, I took the kind of sum up of the last meeting. I didn't have, didn't have a lot of time, so I couldn't generate a plan, but what I tried to do was at least give you a few estimates, which I'll describe, and there are a number of, I think, great options with the money you have. And the two estimates, which I'll break them down in a second. The first one on top, or the lower one, is right about a million dollars, and that's for an all grass option, which is what you asked for. The second one, which is 1.7 million dollars in the top, and that's for a partial synthetic turf, partial grass option. Well, if you give me a couple of seconds, I'll explain you what this means. So, in the first option, we would take the field as it exists today, rip off the existing grass surface, take the clay and fields up, and it's in tiny, inside all the fence lines, um, bring some new soil in, probably mix it with sand, replace, replace or repair the drainage, replace all the irrigation system, shut the field down for about, uh, an eight month, eight month period, and you'd come back to a brand-new grass field with proper drainage. And that would be around a million dollars, is what the estimate is. There are other items on that sheet as you move down, other lighting options. So if you were to light the, the premier Little League field all by itself with LED lights, we assume that to be around 462. If you would like the remainder of the field with lights, that'd be another 693. And there's other options in there, but those are very small costs. On the second option, we looked at having the back half of the field, or the area that's not the premier Little League field, being all synthetic turf with the Enviro fill or cork, or whatever that amounts to be, because there's a couple of types that are now. The front half Little League field being a rehabilitated grass field, so we rip off all the grass, all the infield, regrade it, fix the drainage, put the irrigation in, leaving the whole front of the site as best as we could, or about, about 40 percent of the site to be all natural grass in the street. The options, neither options has parking lots in it. It, it has, again, the same lighting options in it, and it would have still some of the same amenities around it as we pick them off the bottom of the menu. What I will tell you is, these are estimates. Our estimates, at least right now in the world of synthetic turf and athletic fields, have been a little bit higher lately, so the prices have been coming in very good. I will tell you that a million dollars, which is what you have, is a lot of money right now, so you have a good number to actually do something. There is a third option, though I didn't have time to estimate out. Myself and Counselwoman Park just had a discussion five minutes before the meeting, is about taking the softball field and potentially making the softball field synthetic turf, potentially lighting the softball field. We'd have to do some reconfiguration of the overall project and slide one out and slide one over, but that is also another option, right? So I believe, to sum it up, and I'm keeping it quick, if you have a million dollars and you want to do something, you could accomplish one of three things. One is all grass, or you do it, and that, whatever comes with it. Number two, you could take the Little League field, make that synthetic turf, and put lights on it, leave our nails grass and not touch it at all, so you leave it exactly the way it is. Number three, you could take the softball field, do some reconfiguration to the bigger soccer field, make that all synthetic turf, and light that for a million dollars. So you have really three, I, what I think is pretty, pretty good options for what you can do on this field. I guess the fourth option, you don't have to mind for. The fourth option was our, was our second estimate, which is for about 1.7, and then if you add the lights to it, you're now in the $2 million range, you would be doing the bigger field as a whole. What I will tell you, and, and the great thing about a project of this nature, if you know that you're going to do more later on, the project can be designed to add more to it later on. So for instance, if you were to pick the softball field now, and you wanted the lights of softball field and just synthetic turf there, if you ever wanted to extend the turf to the rest of the project, we just need to know that now so we can design it for the addition later on, and you would do that later on. Is it going to cost you a little more money to phase it, only from the fact that you're going to rehabilitate this grass area and fix this sprinkler, but you have to do that anyway? So it's not really costing you any money. You know, people might say, "Well, you're phasing, you're losing money." You're not, really not spending any money, because no matter what we do, we have to fix this field, at least resaw it and potentially put some, or at least, at least go in there and hydroseed it, aerate it, and really this can be great, because it's, it's in really bad condition, so. So, yeah, three good options. I, I think we, we did have a very productive meeting tonight. It was long, but it was productive. It's just, now, I just need direction from this point forward where you want to go. Okay.
I just, a little, a little confusing.
You have questions?
Well, Andy was a little, um, confused with the direction. I think, I'm not, I'm misunderstanding you now.
Turn on your microphone.
Oh, I'm not on? Okay. Um, we only have a million dollars right now, so clearly, um, what my understanding was, that you were going to come back and let us know for that million dollars, what could we do? Doing the softball field was always our first choice. We spoke about that from our first meeting, to possibly just do that girls' softball field. That was something that we spoke about months ago, um, so-
You have, you have three options for a million dollars right now.
Right, but, um, I think for myself, what I need to hear from you is, what specifically, and how can you phase that out, because we need that direction. This is great, you giving us numbers like this, but it doesn't break it down as to what we can do for the million out of here, because you're giving us a million in grass, but there's no lights. So, um, the light portion, if you're lighting the whole field, is according to this book, 1.25 million, and according to the, no, I don't have my glasses with me, it looks like this, to do the Little League field, is 462, so none of the numbers add up to a million dollars, so what-
Right, so, okay.
What we need, what I need, I don't know, I would think the rest of the council needs too, is to know what we, what can we complete for a million dollars specifically?
I just, I, I just said it.
It doesn't, it, it-
Do you want to repeat that again?
There's no lights, there's no, there's no lights-
Learn, learn, repeat it again.
Okay.
For a million dollars, you can get the entire complex, you can get the entire complex done in grass-
Right, with no lights.
With drainage, irrigation, and no lights, that's one.
Exactly, right.
That's why, that's option one. Option two is, is you can get the Little League field done in synthetic turf-
Oh, which, what number?
With lights. I don't have that on number five. I'm taking it from these numbers.
Oh, so we don't, okay, we don't have that.
Right, so you can get the Little League field done with lights, nothing else done on the project. No, nothing, just that.
Turf and lights on Little League.
That's it. Option number three-
Wait, all turf?
All turf.
Or just infield turf?
All turf.
Or, okay, all turf?
The whole entire Little League field.
So, wait, let's try, so we need to, we don't, we don't have this on here, okay.
And just to be clear, it's this cork, right?
Oh, yeah, we only want a cork, yeah. Right, only cork, yeah.
Yeah, and all the options are, we'll call it Enviro fill.
Okay.
Since it's our meeting, I just, it's, not a lot of time passed by, but I tried to do the research. So the turf world is obviously getting pressure on the rubber infill, as you guys say.
Right.
So they're now coming up with what's called a third option.
Mm-hmm.
We call it Enviro fill, so you have a cork option, so we're going to price that.
Mm-hmm.
If you go into turf option, we'll get it, we'll get a price for cork-
Okay.
And we're going to get a price for another product called Enviro fill, which is made from shells of walnuts and peanuts and stuff.
Okay.
They think shells of pulverize them, and they use that as the infill. And they also use sand, because sandings can help weight it. So, there is another option out there.
Okay.
All are organic.
But it's within our budget?
Uh, well, yes, the, I have, I had a price for cork.
Okay.
So cork is within your budget. And, and I'm hoping-
Crushed peanuts, though. Kids have peanut allergies.
It's a, it's the shell, so I don't have that.
I think they take it and wash it, but, yeah, it's a good question. I don't know, I don't know the answer. All right.
My kids are-
You're not just checking it.
And then the third option was softball field.
The third option is just to reverse the league. It would take the entire softball field. The complex would have to expand a little bit, they need some space between the big league field and the softball field, to take the softball field in all synthetic turf with lights. And that's, that's three options for a million dollars.
I talked to you about that specifically.
Yes, three options for a million dollars.
Okay.
I think they're all good, I think they're all good options.
Excuse me, Mrs. Chappell, could you clear the doorway, please? Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, okay, so, on the option with the, the softball field being redone and expanding it, um, could we, um, what would that cost exactly for the softball, expanding it, and lights on that field, where then the girls', where the, where the girls' softball, and then possibly the boys' Little League? Obviously, they would have to work that out, you know, with any, with each other. They could both utilize that field, if needed, obviously, if scheduling permits. Sorry?
That would just be scheduling.
Right, I know, and the cost of that is?
A million dollars.
Okay.
So you wouldn't be doing anything else, anything else in the entire park?
Right, but we can plan what phase two would be now-
Correct.
Right, together, and just do the, the Little League field, because-
Or, or the softball field. Either, or, either or.
I'm, I'm sorry, I meant to say, so I, personally, I don't know what everybody else thinks here. I think the softball field, the Little League field's in pretty good shape, um, right?
Let me ask a question.
Softball is really bad. Girls' softball feels bad.
Maybe for the mayor and council, it would be helpful to me, is, since we're talking about it, maybe you should, you could decide now if the softball field, if you want to turf it and put lights on it, if that's phase one, then, then let's work through the next option. If, if only two of yous want it and the rest don't, then we're wasting it.
I know. I'd like to hear what my colleagues think, I mean, you know.
Do you want to, no, it's fine. It's a good question, and I, again, I appreciate you coming in. I know we're summled all over the place still, so let's try to bring it down to earth here. Counselwoman Minnaversa, do you have any questions or views?
Well, the issue is the entire place needs work.
Of course, we're in agreement with that. This is phase one, just phase one to phase two.
So, I, I guess my, my question would be, if we're going to do phase one, and you pick a softball field, and you pick a Little League field, whichever it is, the, the rest of the field, still, we still would run into that issue. Whereas if we did the entire field in turf, at least we could, as Andy said last meeting, you could always do a turf down the road, but at least you'd have the infrastructure part of, of drainage, and, correct, Andy, we can sure the drainage is proper for whatever we did in future, and we'd have a brand-new field on the entire park. So, I, right now, I'm leaning towards that, listening to Andy, but we, obviously-
Towards natural grass.
Natural grass.
And you said entire turf.
You said entire turf.
You said entire turf, that's why I was like, you-
Oh, I would say, yeah, I would say natural grass.
I was like, wait a second, where's that got from? Real turf!
I guess the athletes say turf is in natural turf, but yeah, I'm not thinking of artificial turf, sorry.
Right.
But, yeah, I mean, natural turf. Um, so that, I, I, right now, that's what I'm, I'm thinking, but I, I mean, there's so many options we have, and we do have to make that decision, so. But I would think, since the entire facility needs rehab, the logical thing to me right now is do the infrastructure, do the drainage, make sure the field's properly graded, properly done. Um, we could have an entirely, you basically say, Andy, the entire facility can be done for a million dollars.
Everything inside the fences.
Right. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking you get more bang for your buck doing that, and still we give the kids a beautiful playing field, give the residents who want natural grass, natural grass, and, I mean, as long as we put enough money in the budget, which is my concern last time, that, you got to maintain that field for as long as we need to, to budget for the next phase, and whether that's Little League, do the Little League field in all turf and lights, whatever we decide, at least we'd have infrastructure done, and the kids would have a, a beautiful place, and I think the people would still have, the, the people who were really concerned about natural grass would have that as well, so.
Counselwoman McMorris.
Um, I still have a couple of questions. Um, so, the, to me, it seems like the biggest issue here is the drainage, especially in the softball, uh, area. I know there's a lot of water at that pool there. Um, if we do all natural grass, and we do spend, I think it's like 150,000 just in their irrigation system, is that, are we going to be guaranteed that we're not going to have a drainage problem after we're done?
Uh, the problem, the problem you have is, listen, this spring was a great example of what happens when you have too much water. Grass fields and clay fields need time to dry out. It doesn't matter, I could put the best drainage system on this field, and I will tell you, there's a good drainage system on this field. We're going to just reconnect with it again. The area above it events it compresses, compacts, coaches use speedy dry, you don't, um, aerate it when you're supposed to aerate it, and just, after a year or two, it, it just holds water, and it takes time for it to get off. So, your problem on your softball field is it's just compact and has a lot of speedy dry on it, and it needs to be kind of repushed or proper way. Any grass field is going to have drainage problems. An example is, and I don't like to get a little heat over this, in the borough of New Providence, a year and a half ago, we redid Lincoln Field. Two Little League infield with a soccer field across it. Brand-new. They didn't want to turf. They wanted to just rip it up and put the ball going, and we did. So what happened this spring? It's wet. It's like, your, your drainage isn't working. We're like, "No, it's working, it's, we've had 20 inches of rain, it's, it's not made to take 20 inches of rain," so, and they get it, and it's okay, but they're like, "Well, maybe we should have turf." Not done telling you to turf. And I'm like, "You know, that's an option you have. If you have grass and we have rain, it's going to be wet. There's nothing but way to avoid that."
So, and if we decide that maybe we'll do the softball field, is that big enough to hold a, um, like a soccer game there? Is that big enough for a soccer field?
It would hold, it would basically hold a 7v7, 7v7 soccer field.
Okay, it's smaller.
Yeah, a little, it'd be a little, yeah. The adults could play like the 5-on-5-
Okay.
Like a soccer cage.
When you say little, it's like up to grade eight?
I'd say 12 or younger, yeah. Maybe 13.
Yeah, maybe 13.
You know, 14's getting pretty big for that.
Yeah. But then we would have a grass side to be bigger, right? In which case we can play-
You could play, if you were, if you were to, again, I haven't laid out, but if you were to turf the softball field, you could then fit a 9v9 field here as well, I think is what the recreation director was talking about. So you'd have a 9v9 and a 7v7 here.
Seven.
Which is not a bad option, I mentioned two soccer fields.
And that pretty much satisfies our recreation needs, anyway.
Yeah.
Is that still going to be within the budget of, like, a million dollars to put the soccer, soccer?
The soccer, it would just, so, on the, on the softball field, if you turf it, it's just inlay lines, you just put lines on it, and they'll put it across the field, so that's only, the inlay lines will cost you anything, they come at zero cost, so it doesn't affect it. Where I will tell you is, and I think you need to get some thought to this, is, if you do do the synthetic turf in the soccer field, you're still going to have to do your regular maintenance for the rest of the project. So, you need to go on that, that field, no matter what you do, and resaw areas that are bad, and fix the clay and fields, but you should, irrelevant at a million dollars, you shouldn't spend that money. I mean, we've heard the people, we've heard your recreation director-
Right.
-it needs, it needs some work, you should do it. If you do no project, you should still do that this year. You should do it this fall. Needs to be done. I mean, I've walked the field a dozen times, there's areas every time.
No, I know, we don't have to, yeah.
All right. Counselwoman McMorris?
Um, I do agree with Counselwoman Minnaversa, um, that, you know, we do need to work on the entire field, not in certain sections, um, so, um, either I would be in favor of spending the money to, um, try to repair, uh, the whole entire field in natural grass, or if we are, if we are in a position to have to pick whether we do the Little League or the softball field in synthetic, I would need to know what our entire plan is before we have to, you know, um, choose which one to go synthetic, because without really knowing, you know, what percentage of the whole field would be synthetic and, you know, grass, um, I don't think it would be fair for us to just pick, "Okay, let's go with Little League, synthetic, this year," and then, you know, later on, having to decide, "Okay, what do we do next?" I would rather see, um, us having like an entire plan. If we can't afford to do the whole field, okay, um, in some parts synthetic and other parts grass, um, right now, I would like to have a plan where we can say, "Okay, we can't afford to do everything right now, but, you know, we'll start with stage one, Little League, synthetic, and then, you know, uh, stage two, we move on to another field, and that would be grass, for example." So, um, I, I need to have more information.
I'll give you a little bit on this, so, you've used my three scenarios. If the first scenario is to take the entire complex and make it grass, you just made the entire complex grass, you don't need a phase two, so that one's, that one's done.
Right.
On the second concept, I'm making the Little League field synthetic with lights. So then your, your other options, I would phase it in two phases, and you could always make it one after that. it one after that. Phase two would be to make the softball field synthetic. So, that's your phase two. Phase three would be to complete the complex and make the soccer, baseball field synthetic. So, that would be a whole synthetic complex. Under the fourth option or third option, putting the softball field as synthetic, your phase two, if you wanted it, would be to finish that side, that area outside the Little League field with synthetic. That would be your phase two. And your phase three would be either rehab the Little League field in natural grass or rehab Lily, Lily field in synthetic turf. So, you had kind of, they would be your three options on that phase and your other two. That's the only way I can even say.
So, it would almost be like 100% all grass?
That's one option.
And another option would be, everything would be synthetic, right?
Yes.
And then the third option would be?
That's 70/30.
70 synthetic and 30 grass.
30 synthetic grass. That would be your three options.
I have a question. So, we're talking about just doing?
I'd like to go through the council and follow Robert's rules. So, use vote, council vote, oh, so.
But I had another question. I need to move over.
Right. So, we'll come, we'll come back. I want to hear from everybody. Councilwoman McMorro.
Thank you. Andy, if you could just explain some things about fields to me. So, I, I never had, I didn't have girls. I only had boys. So, we played on Little League fields. What is the difference between a Little League field and a girls' or softball field? The one where?
So, size-wise, nothing. The only difference is the distance to the mound.
The distance to the mound?
The outside dimensions are the same.
Okay, yeah, okay. So, are the, can the mounds be interchangeable on a field?
Yes.
Okay. So, I have a question, a thought for you and for the council. I, I would love to have all grass. But I just, given the report by the recreation director, I just, I don't see how it's feasibly possible. Because we have to deal with real numbers. And the numbers of the usage cannot carry, the grass can't sustain with the, with the amount of usage that we have. I mean, we've been through this. The councils before us spent millions in putting in a grass field. And it's not their fault that, it's, it's not their fault that it didn't work. It's just that we're on rock and the ground gets compacted. I mean, whether it was Boswell or it was Fazer, everybody's telling us the same thing. It cannot carry that amount of usage. So, we have to come up with an alternative plan, which means to take some of our usage off. But the amount of usage that we need to take off, according to our recreation director, we can't, we can't get it off. We have nowhere to put it. I mean, the school is, is willing to work with us and that's wonderful, but it's still not enough to let that field.
The one thing I'll, I'll tell you about, we're talking about, in the Borough of New Province is, again, an example, they had the same dilemma on a similar complex, which was called Little League Field. And they really fought over the synthetic turf issue across the whole field. And the, of course, surrounded by residents who really fought over it because they were afraid to use. So, they decided on their complex to take two infields of their Little League field, just the infields, and use them in synthetic turf. And leave the outfield of the Little League field all grass.
Well, I'm, I'm getting there.
And they found, and they found that when soccer couldn't play on the grass, they would practice and play on the synthetic infield. And their field condition was actually a good condition.
Right. So, if I could just get to where I'm going. Okay. So, I think, for my own sake, if you can, I'm agreeing with Gloria that we do need more information, okay? But we have, we've got a plan of, of what we can do for the million dollars. But I don't think we should be calling it Little League field or softball field if what you're telling me is that they're really the same field. It's just the mound difference and they're interchangeable. What I believe we're looking to accomplish or what we, we need to figure out how to do is, how do we, A, alleviate the over-usage on this field so it can be maintained properly and, and thrive? And B, with all, you know, with, with the amount of rain that we're having, how do we still, how are we able to still have playing time for the town, for the, for the kids or adults that are using these softball fields too? So, why can't we then just come up, let it be, we're calling it softball field, but we have a field. We're creating a field, one field, with turf, just one. And everything else is natural grass. Because if we have, and I think it's, it should be interchangeable, quite frankly, whether girls' softball wants to play on it or boys' Little League wants to play on it, that's between them and Rashard to schedule that, to, to come up with a plan for them to be able to use it properly. But it's one field that they'll have to be able to interchange. And then, if the other one wants to play on the grass field, the Little League, we have two fields, right?
I think.
Why can't they interchange it if they want to do grass?
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Let's ask Councilman Park for his views.
Okay. Andy, last time we talked about it, we were going to minimize about the artificial turf, right? But tonight, you're talking about the soft field that's on the artificial that will be 70% of the total product?
No, if you did the softball field, you know, or the other Little League field, softball field, there aren't just turf. That'd be about 30% of the project, 70%.
Which is where we want it.
Yeah, okay. That, I'm supporting about that product. It's, I tell you, a lot of residents, they don't worry about, you know, the artificial ground. So, that, maybe we can modify about our budget and usage. We can keep talking about it. In my personal opinion, that minimizes artificial, wherever the field is, infield only or maybe soft field, that I'm going to support the idea. Yeah.
Councilman Al.
Since our funds are limited at a million dollars, as I mentioned in the meeting on Monday, you know, for me, I think the priority would be the lighting and, you know, trying to, a proposal where we would, before we get into the surface of the field, a proposal which would contemplate all the other factors on the field. Lighting, you know, I know everyone talks about playability. You know, it's sort of one year that we just have to go through as it pertains to the surface. But the lighting itself will allow us to, you know, go deeper into the evenings. So, you know, if there is turf, as Councilman Park mentioned, you know, sort of a 37 knee breakdown, where we would have 30% turf, 70% grass. And I would probably, you know, my vision of that in my mind, I'm just saying to myself, I'd love to push that sort of away from the residents. You know, softball field is way down on that side. It would push a lot of people to, there would be a lot more action on that side of the field. That side of the field's always been really quiet, you know, the tennis courts and basketball court. So, you know, that's the way I think about it. I know you mentioned in these proposals here, it's just a partial lighting and would already cost $462,000. So, if we're talking about lighting up the entire recreation center, it'll be a much larger figure than that. So, that, that alone, I think, would be, you know, we'd go through the $1 million pretty quickly.
The other thing, I guess, the upper left picture, pass that on. Look at the upper left picture. So, the other, I guess there's a, there's four options. The third option could be, if lighting is the biggest priority, so you have a surface issue. You have surface issues at your baseball infield. So, your fourth option could be like that upper left picture, which is, you would do both the Little League infield and the Little League softball infield in synthetic turf. You would strip and re-sod and fix the infield to the base, the big soccer, baseball field, and only light the softball field. You can do that for a million dollars too.
Really?
Yeah. So, that would give you, the reason that picture's important is because you'll never have to cancel a game because your infield's batting a little like your softball. And then the outfield would be pitched so it grades out pretty good. So, unless you had really excessive rain, the grass should hold a fine. And it gives you areas to practice kick-around soccer or baseball, you know, pepper games and stuff like that in the infield. So, that is actually a fourth option.
But what's the breakdown of grass versus?
It would be way less. It would only be, your turf would now be, I'll say, 15% or less.
Well.
Your grass will be 85%.
So, I had.
Is that still playable?
Yeah.
If it rains?
If you re-sod it all, well, myself. Maybe, again, I want to be very careful how I, how I say this. If I get 2 inches of rain tonight and I have a sod field, I don't care what rain out there, you're not playing on it next day.
Oh, and turf, you're not playing either?
Uh, turf, you play, my brain. You can play, and you, yeah, turf takes 7 inches of rain from our house. It's, the drainage on it's amazing.
So, Andy, how much, how much time would you need to get more information to us based on what we're discussing right now?
Listen, all I need to, if you, if you give me good direction, I can get the specific information for you by next week.
Okay. Well, one of the.
Or you can get a week.
Right. So, so I'm getting calls from soccer parents who are saying that, you know, we want our kids to play on even short soccer fields, but we don't want to get rain out of soccer. We haven't mentioned pavilions or sand shelters tonight. That's a subsequent stage. So, if you stage it out for us with a timeline, we could put our heads together. The scenarios that you already discussed, I think, are something that's appealing. I don't know about that last situation where you would have a turf infield and natural grass outfield.
No, I, no, well, the first one.
Well, that's one of the ones also.
No, I know that. But you could have a small soccer field, I said, on.
Not on a turf, on a turf.
No, no. I'm talking, the other one you could, that would, that would really.
Give you a small.
We need a, we need a, a small area where there's soccer. Soccer has the highest usage.
I think that would probably help most residents, you know? The one where it's the full field in the back, away from the residents, the lights.
Can we do the softball?
Councilman Will is bringing up a good point when he's talking about bringing the action to the back of that field. Right now, everybody, when they gather, they're all at the front of the field. Nobody really goes to the back. It's so beautiful back there. If you take and, and we develop that back area?
That has the worst drainage right now, too.
And that has the worst drainage now, too.
Okay, I want to say, and I said this down the night, but you may have missed it. If we isolate off that back softball field, you can remove the ability to have a full-size soccer field. So, they'll all, it's gone. We're going to have to put a fence there. Because the bigger league baseball plays back there, it'll effectively hire because it'll be a shorter, it'll be a shorter distance. It'll be like 280% so you have to put up a 15 or 15 high fence back there. Those home runs outside, not that it's to be good, you wouldn't be seeing it. But across that, and then you fence off and create like a 6v6, 7v7 soccer field. So, you have both softball, light baseball, adult softball, and small-sized soccer field, one.
And can we do?
And you have those small-sized soccer on grass.
Right.
A bigger one, the 9v9.
But can we do that and still have money to fix the grass and the rest of the park?
So, if you do the whole entire softball, Little League field and put lights on it, you're going to spend $3 million. Or, as I said, the rest of the park needs maintenance now. So, whatever money you're dedicating to that maintenance, you're going to need to do. You don't have enough money left to do.
What's the maintenance on the rest of the park?
I mean, I, I would tell you that you probably need to spend somewhere between $50,000 and $75,000 on it right now, as it exists right now. You need areas that need to be closed, re-sod.
That's not capital. That's not capital.
Redrained. It should be operated.
That's operating. That's not capital. You can't take that out of capital. Right?
Can you take the scenarios that we just discussed over the last 20 minutes?
For them?
Yeah.
We're just, we're getting.
I would do the, no, I think people want to hear that one. And then just give us a breakdown in cost and also timing and then what other phases would come in after that in terms of cost. And then, just let me know when you have it. I'm not sure how long it's going to take you. We have a meeting on July 12th.
I could have.
If, if it's done sooner, maybe we'll have a special meeting to deal with it if everybody's around. And I appreciate you coming in here. As I know, the, the rest of the council appreciates you doing all this work as well.
I'll know. I can get it to you by the 30th, which is a Friday.
Okay.
And then you can schedule whatever you want. And I'll try to get some sketches so you have something to look at. So, it's not just.
I think that's helpful. Thank you very much. Thank you, council.
And when, when you make a rendering, can you show where the lights would be around that field?
Yeah.
Because if we're doing that backfield, maybe light up the basketball courts at the same time? Close enough?
I don't.
So, so.
Why not? We're right there.
No, no, that's a good, that's a great question.
We're right there.
If you do the backfield, Little League field, softball has four light bulbs. The light bulb fall between first and third, first and home and third and home. So, that lightbulb over here, we can put like that, we can put two lights on the back of the dome there.
And light the basketball.
Light the whole dome.
By the way, there's one, one question I forgot to ask you, Andy. The commercial parking lots behind the fields, do they drain at all onto the field or is that drainage working properly for them?
So, CNBC, when I was on my own, when I was headland engineering, I was their engineer at that site, their sites drain back towards 9W. So, you know where those big dishes are?
Right, so they go that way.
Those dishes, all that part of it drains back down.
Goes backwards.
Goes into their site. The other development, I think they drain towards CNBC into 9W. None of it comes to you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We just need you to stick around for Russ Perino's presentation, which, actually, I'm going to go through the correspondence. We had received it. We actually talked about it already. So, department reports. Anybody have any questions on those? If not, can I have a motion to accept the department reports?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Claims from May 11th to 2017 through June 14, 2017. Councilwoman McMorro, you are the finance chair. Can you speak to those, please?
Yes, mayor, thank you. First of all, I'm just going to ask the council, please, you got to come in and sign the bills. I signed them all. There are a lot of bills. We only have one signature. No one came in to sign the bills today.
Actually, I called in and they told me that you were there, so.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, we need two signatures.
No, I understand that.
Yeah. So, I just, I know everybody's busy, but if we can make an effort, they're there from Friday. Please, just come in and sign.
Yeah, I think our borough administrator has something to add regarding claims, correct?
There's a handwritten check on the bill list page. It's from the prior council meeting. I pulled the check for Paul Barberini. I added that back on. It's due for payment.
And for the public, Paul Barberini is the auditing firm.
Yeah, the auditing firm. So, I've added that back on. I had to check the contract with the borough. That's in compliance with the contract. So, I've added it back on to the mayor and council to approve payment. And I would just ask that we use a vote on the payment of claims. There's check 18631 needs to be voted separately. Councilman Adversa needs to recuse from that vote.
Which check is that?
What's it, 18, huh?
18631.
18631. It's a replacement check because we changed things.
18631, okay. All right. So, mayor, I review the claims and I request that they be paid contingent on some, another council member going in and signing it and pulling check 18631.
Can we have a discussion on the bills?
I don't think it's pulled 18631. He can't pull it.
No, it's not pulled. It's.
It's not pulled, I mean, pulled, pulled for a separate vote. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Can we have a discussion on the bill?
Do you have a comment?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
So, I received an email from, I believe it was Lizette about the bill list for the month of May.
Bill list?
All the claims that, you know, the.
No, I mean, do we have that here?
I have it here. I, I believe all the council members, including the mayor, was emailed. Can you hear me, Mary?
I can.
Okay. So, I received a, a bill list this afternoon for the month of May and part of, part of June, part of June. And I noticed that there wasn't a claim from the borough attorney's office. So, I called the borough. I spoke to Lizette. And I was advised that the, the claim was pulled by Catherine. And it just, I was just curious why. So, I asked them to send me a copy of the claims. And I have a copy here. Unfortunately, I can't share with the, the public. But the.
Wait, Councilwoman, one second.
Well, that.
And I understand. I have a question. Does it have to do with voting? I'm just confused.
Yeah, because.
Do you have to vote on the bills? Because you just said it's not on the bill list.
It's not on the bill, but why wasn't it on the bill? If it was incurred in May?
It's a legitimate question. I'm just saying, it's a legitimate question, but we're just voting on the bills that are on the list right now. And we.
Well, we are on the subject of the bill, so I'd like to know why it was pulled.
I pulled it because I need to review what pertains to council meetings and what's on the billable portion. So, I need to review that based on your contract with, well, understanding with the attorney's office. So, there's some things that are on the billable hours that I think should be under the, the contracted amounts for 2,500 for the council meeting. So, instead of doing that publicly at council meeting, I pulled it before.
Right. She let me know she was pulling.
So that I wouldn't make you do that.
So, we're, we're at a point in the meeting where we're approving bills that were.
Bills that are on the bill list.
Let me finish. Bills that were presented for payment.
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to pay the bills that were presented for payment?
I already made the motion.
Somebody seconded it?
Second.
Can you have a vote?
Councilperson Adversa?
I'll recuse on check 18631.
We're going to vote separate on that vote. We're voting on everything but 18631.
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
So, now we need a motion to approve 863.
18, 18.
It's 18631. Okay.
So, moved.
Second.
Who's that second?
Will.
Carol Call, please.
Councilperson Adversa?
I'll recuse.
E. Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'd like to call up our planning board chair, Russ Perino, to give us a presentation on what the planning board has been working on regarding the B3 zone. But Borough Council's going to make a comment as well.
Hi, Mr. Chair. I just want the members of the public to know that this is a, just a small presentation. We're going to look at a resolution to refer further study to the planning board. And there will be open public meetings there where there will be more detail, more discussion, and more procedure over time. So, this is really a preliminary. And, you know, if you have comment tonight, we're going to have public comment after this. We planned it that way, so you could comment. But be aware, the planning board's going to be holding a lot more here.
So, the genesis of this project is that when I became mayor, one of the things that I wanted to accomplish was basically looking at the south part of 9W as a borders fort Lee, which I think we could all agree on is in need of some work. There's boarding up buildings there. It looks blighted. It does not look like the typical, does not look like the typical anglewood cliffs environment that you would expect. So, we, we've asked the planning board to, to consider what we can do there to improve its appearance. You can have the public look at it. You know, we, we have a drawing here. So, Russ as a representative, Mr. Perino as a representative of the planning board, and I thank you for being here, is going to give us a mini presentation. And as council mentioned, we will be, well, the planning board will be having meetings on this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We were asked by the governing body some months ago to look at the rezoning of the B3 zone. And we have had several meetings, both at the committee level and also at public venues, where we've started to discuss the improvements needed for the B3 zone. We had retained a planner who has been working diligently along with Mr. Hippel at Mesa Consulting in bringing some options to our attention as to how to go about fixing something that clearly needs rehabilitation. So, to start with, a brief description of the B3 zone of. So to start with, a brief description of the B3 zone, of those that may not know really what that means. It's the southernmost section of 9W on both sides of the state highway, east and west. It starts at the Fort Lee border, it continues to Van Osten Avenue. So it's both sides of 9W, east and west side, from the Fort Lee border to Van Osten Avenue. The properties within that zone are very varied in terms of shape. There are some, a lot depths that are probably less than 50 feet, which would be on the west side, for instance, where the exercise or fitness center is. And then if you flip to the other side, on the east side, the properties vary in a 250 to 280 feet in depth. So you've got a lot of different depths in properties, which really compromises the ability to rezone this one-size-fits-all on the B3 zone. That's really one of the major problems that we face here. Some of the properties are functioning, newer construction, such as the preschool, et cetera, and those properties obviously are there and there to stay. On the other hand, is quite a few properties on both sides of 9W, but especially on the east side, that are in serious need of rehabilitation. And we looked at, what we were charged with was rezoning, potential rezoning of the B3. And we looked at it, we came to a bit of a roadblock here. You know, how do you rezone these properties so that there could be some prudent development now and in the future? And because of the number of lots, let's take the east side, for instance, and that's the side closest to Fifth Street. The properties range from, I think, some of them even less than 50 feet wide, some of them are wider. There's presently, I think, 14 properties on the east side of 9W, from the Fort Lee border to, that would be Bayview Avenue. There's 13 curb cuts in that section of 9W. And although that may not create a problem right now, it's because many of those properties are not in use, is the term that I'll use. If you imagine new development happening individually on many of those lots, and imagine the ingress, ingress problems that you have, where you need a driveway every 50 feet or 60 feet to get to the parking, assuming it's in the back of the properties, how does that work? It becomes almost an impossibility, and I think that's one of the major reasons why we're sitting here in 2017 with what we have. And other planning boards in the past, and I'm sure other governing bodies charged their planning boards to look at this, I've seen at least one report from quite a few years back, it may have been eight or 10 years, I think. 10 years ago, that issued a report, complete with, you know, renderings and everything else, for rezoning, a potential rezoning of the property. Never went anywhere. I can't tell you why, I wasn't privy to, you know, the goings-on back then. But it stands to reason that there is something of a brick wall, and realized that this rezoning in itself was not something that could accomplish the goals, which is to encourage some redevelopment in this area. So Mesa Consulting came in and made a short presentation at our last public meeting, and elaborated a bit about the options as we move forward. And we've been brainstorming this at the public meetings for a couple of months now, and the options range from nothing more than a streetscape for the B3 zone, which is not what you asked for, and it's not what I think is required. It's a band-aid to sort of cover up what's there now. That's not what I think is what you all want here. So that was the easiest thing, is just basically put a band-aid, put some trees, and hopefully hide what's there. The most extreme being finding the areas in need of redevelopment, which means potential eminent domain and everything else. That's the opposite extreme. We're assuming that that's not where this governing body wants to go. So the other options were a simple rezoning, which is what was attempted to have been done years ago and never came to fruition. And the problem is, again, if you look at the size of these properties and the number of individual owners, there's no way to bring them together to have a cohesive type development. So that's what brought us to a discussion about an area in need of rehabilitation. My first comment is it does not include eminent domain or the taking of anyone's property. That's first and foremost. But what it does is allows the governing body, along with suggestions from the Planning Board, to develop a more cohesive plan for the B3 zone. And I'm talking now specifically about the east side, so you could have several driveways rather than 13. You could have parking that is shared in the rear of these buildings. The governing body would also have the ability to control the development in a more robust way, in terms of controlling the materials used in construction, to determine the locations of the driveways and parking. So there's a lot of benefit to finding that this is an area in need of rehabilitation. We discussed about, well, would you just determine that the east side should be in an area of rehabilitation, or the entire zone? I think the consensus was from our planner, and our professionals, was that it probably better to be the entire B3 zone.
Correct.
And just so one note, I don't know what town this was, it's somewhere in New Jersey. There's at least one community where the entire town was determined in a need of rehabilitation. So this is not a stigma that's attached to one property, or a zone, or the whole town. It's a means of finding a way out of an issue that has been allowed to fester for many, many years. So why I'm here tonight, on behalf of the Planning Board, is to share with you where we are now and what we're asking for from you. Every member of our board, and that's 10 members, plus our professionals, all agreed that we ask you, the governing body, to at least allow us to see if the B3 zone meets the criteria for an area in need of rehabilitation. It's your first step that you have to take. We can't touch it until you all say, you know what, we want you to at least look at it. And I'm not here tonight to say, yeah, let's determine that it's an area in need of rehabilitation. That's not the way it works.
Okay.
The way it should work is that if you pass the resolution, doing what I just asked for, then that would charge us with the ability to go back, have our design professionals look at this, and see if the area meets the criteria required by the state of New Jersey. Then we would come back in a public setting with our professionals, make a full presentation before this council, and the public would obviously have a right to give their input at that time.
Right. What Mr. Perino is referring to is Resolution 120, referring study of B3 zone to Planning Board. Mr. Perino, did you have more to add?
Mr. Hippel is here. Andy, is there something that I'm missing?
No, I mean, just to maybe just sum it up in even more basic terms, I've been involved in an area that's going to need rehabbing a number of these guys now. If I have to give you this simple definition, it allows you as a council to charge your planning board with creating overlay zoning in an area, to give incentive to property owners who have properties that are not in the best condition or in poor condition, reason to develop. Right now, it's obvious your current zoning is not allowing them to redevelop the properties economically. So this allows you to overlay zoning. So if that's an eliminate your old zoning, you just, because with overlay zoning, you give them all the choices, and allow you to do it relatively easy. Different combination involved, nobody has to do anything. It's, you know, a number of these guys working, using this very successfully, and a lot of it's developed, and you see south and east of here, where cities and towns are in bad shape, have been fully redeveloped, business process, and the state has done this for many years.
Right.
Goes back into the 70s.
Thank you. I, you know, I should add that my view of government is that we have to create the right environment for property owners to maximize the value of their properties, which will maximize the appearance of the town. We're not here to advocate for eminent domain. I abhor it, I'm against it, it'll never happen as long as I'm mayor. But I do want to create the right environment for property owners to let market forces decide what they do with their property. So I thank you very much, Mr. Perino and Andy, for being here.
If I could add one more thing, too. This does not obviate the need for rezoning. This is just part of the process, and we, as a board, are limited as to which direction do we go in. If you all say, no, we don't want to have a conversation about this, just rezone it, that's going to mean us being boxed in, trying to create some new setback requirements and night restrictions, maybe some new uses, and that's the end of it. If, though, you concur that we should at least be looking at this area in need of rehabilitation, that opens up a whole nother possibilities for us to zone it and to create different criteria for, not just for the properties most in need of rehabilitation right now, but hopefully for that to eventually grow out, you know, for most of the B3 zone. Because although there's some operating properties, restaurants, et cetera, are there, they're operating in houses, one day they'll go out of business, and we will have something in place theoretically where they could become part of this larger development and improvement.
Right. And that would be mission accomplished. So I would strongly urge the council to support the passage of Resolution 120. Did anyone have any questions or comments? Or am I going to open it up to the council?
I thought it was very clearly explained.
Yeah, great job. Yes, Councilman.
Karen, there's no requirement by the Borough to make any arrangements such as in lieu of taxes or anything like that.
There is not. It's not a requirement. There is an option if the town felt it necessary to create some incentives theoretically, they could do so.
You would have to decide incentivize it?
That's correct.
I don't know a little bit about it. I'm anxious to hear you.
Right, that's something that I don't support. Right, no. We create the right environment, and property owners need to do the right thing. Okay? Councilwoman Park, did you have a question?
I don't have a, I think it's great that you investigate, I just, I don't like the way the resolution is ordered, so...
Do you have a suggestion?
Maybe investigate, that's a possibility of a designation, as opposed to include the consideration of, we're not considering, including consideration right now, all right? We're just talking about investigating.
Could I see possibly a copy of the resolution? I haven't seen it yet myself.
It's a draft. Hold on.
I just don't like the word consideration.
Yeah.
You got a copy for him?
Oh, he got it, he got it.
One, twenty?
What paragraph is that written?
It's just at the end, yeah.
Last paragraph?
Is authorized to include the consideration of...
Yeah, I mean legally, they can't do it.
Right.
They can only recommend it to us.
Right.
I could have just a couple of questions as well, if I wanted to, Councilman.
I would ask to say authorized to investigate the possible designation of the B3 zone, as opposed to, is authorized to include the consideration of the designation of the B3 zone.
I would leave it the way it is, actually.
I've just had a couple of questions.
Yes. Councilwoman, oh, hold on a second. Councilwoman, oh, did you have any questions?
No, but Mayor, I would like to ask you why you wouldn't consider changing the word?
Why do we have to put consideration in there, though?
Because that's what we're doing, considering others as well. Councilwoman McNamara, did you have any questions?
I thought we're not authorizing consideration right now. We're not considering anything right now, other than we're going to investigate.
We're authorized them to consider.
They're offered.
I think they can work for the planning board, I think there is some legal stuff in this. You are authorizing them...
Right.
...to consider changes to recommend to you. I think the authorization wording is crucial for that, when we're having, definitely, I don't necessarily...
Investigating doesn't get us there.
No, I have to be about...
Considering doesn't get us there.
...a lot of what I'm going to do, other legislation, I don't think...
If you're investigating something, you're not using any discretion. If you're considering something, you're coming back, using discretion, and recommending something to the council.
No, because under your authorization, they're going to actually try to find an area in rehab and then recommend it back to you, so they have to...
Yeah, but you're not limiting yourself to rehab.
No, under authorization, they're just investigating, coming back and having...
That's what, that's what they've been doing.
Right.
Right. Now we're going on...
Yeah, I understand why she's wanting that word, but I think they need some word.
Okay.
Right, as long as...
I know what she's trying to say. Right, as long as, you know, right now, it's, you're going to go and investigate, come back, and then we're going to have a vote, as opposed to giving you authority now to perhaps consider zoning it, or not zoning it, but do that.
We're actually not even touching the zoning question yet. That's down the road. That'll be a while away from there.
We'll ask Borough Council to give us a primer on how the whole process works.
So the area in need of redevelopment designation, start rehabilitation, I'm sorry, rehabilitation, redevelopment is different. It's much, redevelopment is much more onerous, it's usually with a lot of big land, and it has a lot more legal requirements, too, to it. The rehabilitation designation is what I like to call as redevelopment light. It's very light. It requires to do it, certain findings to be made about the properties within the area you're looking at, and the investigative study part of the law requires the Planning Board to do it. It requires this governing body to authorize the Planning Board to consider whatever options they want. We specifically are authorizing the Board to consider an area in need of rehabilitation. However, they can also come back to us and tell us, we want to make it, part of it B3A, part of it B32, and do an overlay over here, whatever they come up with. They are then required to bring it back to this council. The Mayor and Council is the only body authorized to issue zoning ordinances or zoning and planning ordinances of any nature. An area in need of rehabilitation is a zoning designation required to be done by ordinance. They must come back to us. They say, we recommend this for these reasons, and we have a study here that says this, these properties fit because of A, B, C, and D under the redevelopment law. So there will never...
Rehabilitation.
Well, okay, but it's called, it's called the Local Redevelopment and Housing Law, right? So rehab is part of that law. They are not allowed to adopt the designation, they only have to make a recommendation. There's a lot of, there's a lot of legal pitfalls that happen when we do a rehabilitation. So fooling, I think that's probably semantics. We really need to just give them, basically, free rein within structure. You have a rezoning, you want a request of the council, tell us why, and tell us it fits under the master plan, right? Or you can do an area, recommend an area in need of redevelopment, tell us why it fits the master plan, or where we need...
Rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation, everyone knows what I'm talking about, right?
We have to say it.
I have to say it.
Look, the normal process, I've heard it times now, is you're not present to investigate or to consider an area in need of rehab.
Right.
And that's, the rule is very specific, it's not a lot of the world. So what three things has to happen? Or one or two things. The northern sewer that serves the area has to be determined to be 50 years or older. Or the housing stock or building stock in the area has to be determined to be 50 years or older.
Let me, let me just...
So the...
Wait, 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 wait. There's six or eight other reasons why you can just designate an area in need of rehabilitation.
Right.
And I do want to specifically tell you as the professional and Mr. Chairman, that the reasons why shouldn't be limited. If any of the rehab laws, if any of the rehab reasons apply, this council should be told.
Okay, I agree.
Right? So you've got to look at all of those eight conditions for, and some may apply to the east side, and some may apply to the west side, right?
Right. So if I may for a second, there will be a report generated by our planner...
Yes.
When we basically have, first, what's going to happen is we have to let the planner go and do their due diligence.
Right.
And that, Andy spoke to it, there's two items that they will be charged with having to handle.
There's a few others.
There's a few others that I have, and there's at least six that I know about, without getting into all of them.
Those two, those two exist, but there's like six...
Right, yes, I've got the six of them. And then we will have a public meeting at the Planning Board, where the members of the public are also permitted to speak to it, they agree, disagree, and why. Then we would pass a resolution...
Back to us.
Back to you, that no, we have, we don't support the concept, or yes, we do, here's the criteria that we feel was necessary, the hurdles that we had to meet to get there, here's why we think it's the right thing to do. it's the right thing to do. We send it back up to you and then it's up to you to schedule your meeting.
And at that point, at that point, unlike a zoning ordinance, a zoning ordinance, they make a recommendation to us and they tell us it fits the master plan, we recommend that you adopt it. We usually then, a governing body then would adopt the ordinance. With the designation area in need of rehabilitation, this governing body will take on an independent review of what the board does. We don't just take the recommendation, we're going to have our review as well. And I also want to point out, and I had a brief discussion with Andy's office, that the borough authorized these planning studies as part of your budget. You put the money aside for that. They have been undertaking that for a couple of months, and I know you're going to keep track of costs.
You're still, you're still...
Yeah.
Okay, good. I want to continue down the line here. Councilwoman McMoore, did you have anything else to add?
No.
Councilwoman Park?
I fully support about this program, this idea.
Councilwoman Wood? Nothing to add. Thank you. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Perino, Mr. Hippelit. We appreciate you coming in. Did you have anything?
I don't think I have any questions, Mayor. I won't comment.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Trent Daniels, for standing. I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Perino, did you want your presentation?
No.
We'll save it for you.
Okay. I could play with that. This one's yours.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to have a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Full move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand, get called on, come to the microphones, get your name and address. Yes?
Deborah Savari, 106 Hollywood Avenue. I have a lot of things I want to comment on. The, the field work, if you were to turf the softball field and put lights there, what would the, is the ultimate plan to spend the original 2,500 or 2.5 million or $3 million at the end of the day?
We're not there yet. We can't ask that question. I mean, that's a premature question at this point.
So if you're going to make a decision today to just do one field, is that decision's going to be made without looking at the long-term...
I didn't say that.
Can I, can I just say this?
I know you were there for the presentation and I know you know that they're going to come back with, Andy's going to come back with more information for us. There are no decisions being made tonight on that, so.
I understand that. Okay, so I'm going to make my opinion clear?
That's fine.
It's my opinion.
That's fine.
Okay? Is that I think if the ultimate goal is going to cost the taxpayers upward of $2 million, I think, again, it still is a decision that should be made with the taxpayers in mind. I think thinking about this project and only thinking about the sports aspect of it, I don't think is acceptable for the community. I think the community should be weighing in on what we're going to do with that field. That's one. Two, I thought the reason for this project, the underlying reason is that we had a drainage problem. And I think what I heard tonight is that we don't have a drainage problem. So do we have a drainage problem? Could we just go and actually do work to the field as it exists today and not have to spend a lot of money and keep the grass there?
I actually heard that we do have a drainage problem.
Yeah, we do.
I've been there in the, looking at the rain.
No, I understand. I'm talking about what I heard tonight.
Right.
That it wasn't a drainage problem.
I think everyone up here can conclude and agree on one thing, that we have a drainage problem at Woody Field.
Mayor, if I may, since I was involved with both sets of engineers, two different time periods, the, the issue is, what, Mr. Hippelit, my understanding, what I was trying to say is that the drains that are underneath all of that compacted soil, probably portions of it can be reused, but we do have a serious drainage problem. So that's answering your first question. So we do have a drainage problem.
So if we only did one field for a million dollars with lights, what would happen to the rest of the drainage problem?
If you heard, if you heard our questions and you asked your questions.
I know he's going to come back to you, I'm relaying my concerns.
Okay, let's get all the concerns.
Right, let me come back.
Let's do this, just get your concerns and we'll go back to the engineer and make sure he understands what your concerns are.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to know, is the order complete? The 2016 order complete? I know that you said you were paying.
It is complete.
It is complete? It's on the website?
Um, no, because the council hasn't adopted it yet. So that has to come to the council.
Okay.
It's just a final document required, was just received, so the order will release within a week.
So it'll be up shortly.
Yeah.
Terrific. The incentive that we were just talking about, so that we have incentive doesn't cost the taxpayers anything ultimately?
We weren't talking about any incentives.
Not, not incentives, I'm sorry, about the rehabilitation program, B3 zones.
If I might, Mayor, incentives in the planning board, planning and zoning world has a really specific meaning?
Right, she said she misspoke.
No, 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 I misspoke. I'm not saying, I'm, I'm asking if the, this program, is it our intention as part of the program? Because I know I've read up a little bit about it, that sometimes incentives are offered to the property owners.
We're not doing that.
So I just want to make clear that we're not doing that. It's not going to cost us anything.
That's an inaccurate conclusion to say at this time. There doesn't have to be an incentive that is financial. An incentive can mean, for example, I'll just give you the standard basic planning incentive.
Okay.
You could have a 10,000, 10,000 foot by 10,000 foot lot, zone B3.
Okay.
And all you can put on it in your zone is 2,500, a building of 2,500 square feet. Under an area in need of rehabilitation, you could provide him with an incentive. If you follow this plan, we will allow you to have 3,500.
I understand that, but that doesn't cost us anything. And he has the benefit of being able to build a, build a project, a bigger project. I get that.
It could be a bigger project or bigger density or less parking.
Totally understand that.
Okay.
Just wanted to confirm that it wouldn't be incentives that affected the taxpayers.
Right. The mayor said he's against pilots.
Okay. The Resolution 1706, 17106, a cooperative agreement, what, what exactly is that all about?
The Bergen County Development Program.
Bergen County Community Development Program, but that's actually 107.
That is a program that the, that the borough has participated in for many years. It's up every three years and all Bergen County municipalities partake in it. And it's a program that we're able to ask for funding for certain projects. For instance, an example, if we wanted to redo the bathrooms in this building, we can apply for a grant. We may get some funding because we're such an affluent, affluent community, we may not get like others, receive as, as others. But this is an agreement that comes up every three years and we do partake in it. There's no cost to the borough to be part of it.
Just one more question. The Resolution 7019, authorizing the approval of the excess sewer user rate. Does, is this, will this bring in additional income to the borough? Because I know there was a whole issue with the sewer rates and how much we had projected in our budget, then we had to go back and amend it. So has this, does this change actually benefit us with additional income?
I hear Catherine coming back, I'm going to defer.
This is also something we do yearly.
We do it every week.
Well, we set the rate yearly, but the question is, has it impacted our finances?
Does this rate actually...
You're asking if it affects our finances, so we'll wait for Catherine to come back.
I appreciate it. Sorry, higher power.
All right, you know, just as you left the room.
109, the sewer rate, how does that affect the budget?
So in terms of the excess sewer rate, what is the impact on the budget or on the finances?
Um, impact in what regard? Is it increased?
Well, we're setting the... Yes, we're setting the rate. Is it revenue neutral or is it...
The revenue will be basically neutral. You remember when we did the budget, I had to take other surplus to cover.
Right. Now, so did this help us at all? Were you able to generate additional income?
No, no, we pretty much stayed flat.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't interested.
That's okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Yes, I see a hand there.
Sorry that Mr. Hippelit left because I was a bit confused in his presentation. Oh, Karen Geiger, 270, I think. I was a bit confused in his re-presentation of the options for the field. To my recollection, at the hearing on Monday, he said, or it was stated, that he was the engineer in 1998, 2001, I'm not quite sure which year is the operative year, when the field was then redone. And he was the primary person who supervised and was involved with, I don't know if he did the design himself at that time, and the field, it was before my involvement, so I really don't know what was done. But I know obviously it hasn't worked well. What I don't understand is in an all-grass option, which is an option I prefer, how he is fixing the drainage issues that he saw 20 years ago that haven't been fixed now.
He said he could not fix the drainage issues. He was quite weak on that.
So is that, no, so is he saying that absent turf fields, drainage issues, artificial turf fields, so we don't get confused, drainage issues in the park will persist?
Yeah, Mayor, I will, I will respond only because I've been involved in it so much. What he's, he is saying that, what he's saying, if we can find a way to get the usage off of that field to the degree that it needs to be taken off of, that that may help the drainage issue, but unless you can find a park, another park or field somewhere else.
I am concerned because you have, we, we are on the Palisades, you can see it there, but that also means we're sitting on rock. When you have a situation where you can't drain, unless you're adding a tremendous amount of topsoil, we're talking six to 12 inches of topsoil or other medium that's good for grass growing, we are going to have problems. We're not talking about the 50-year storm or the 20-year, or even the 10-year storm. We're talking about normal rainfall. And why are we doing all of this if the problems we have now are not going to be alleviated after spending a million dollars?
But we're not going to, Mrs. Geiger.
Yeah.
We're not going to. We're putting a plan together. I know you were at all those meetings and you've repeatedly heard...
No, I was only at the last one.
Actually, I think you have a good point, and this may be the first time we agree all year. I mean, I agree that if you're doing the same thing over and over, and you should not expect necessarily a different outcome unless you do something different when you start off with. And I think Andy mentioned two things. It was field usage and compaction. At the time, soil just settles and it's been crushing the drain system, which, it does drain if everything was good.
I don't know whether it drained in 2004 effectively, right after it was done.
Well, he, he said it was good, and I don't think he actually mentioned six to 12 inches. I don't know what the exact amount of soil would be, but...
Because six to 12 inches is the amount that professional football teams have been putting back in their fields when they rip out the artificial turf and go back to grass.
I didn't have a good night's sleep at a motel, so I'm not an expert on how much soil you need.
I'm not an expert either, that's why I used the range, just an article or two I read. But obviously, the more topsoil you have, the deeper the roots can grow on grass and the better that it could respond to wear and tear. That's what happens in grass.
Right, so I'm hoping we do something different and get a different outcome, because the last outcome wasn't so...
But I don't know why the last outcome didn't work, and that's what I want to make sure is addressed.
Usage, well, I understand from Andy, usage and compaction.
And, or is it lack of maintenance?
No, I think...
I don't know.
I think our crews do a great job, yeah.
Well, they may not have been given the money to do the great job. The little league field...
Well, the by administration, they get the money, so.
They don't have it this year, it was 7,000, I think, in the budget.
No, I think, no one's complaining except you.
Okay, I'm not complaining, I'm asking.
Okay, so we will ask him your questions. And I know you had an opportunity to speak to Andy on Monday, and you did ask him questions, but you didn't ask him those questions.
No, because they occurred to me afterwards. Because I learned that he was the engineer 20 years ago. And engineering may not have changed that significantly, and what he didn't say other than the increased usage was what he was going to do differently that would prevent the problem from recurring five or 10 years or 15 years from now after we've invested all this money. That's all. Second question. The rehab zone, and I'm glad that I think Russ is still here, thank you.
I have a question about this. I'm very familiar with that part of town, obviously. You know, I've spoken at planning board meetings about it. We have a problem with a failure of a single landlord to maintain his properties. That's caused what you're calling blight, or whatever else you want to call it. There are tools that this borough has as its, at its disposal, other than declaring something a blighted area and declaring it a rehab zone, which has all kinds of other implications, which I would like to learn more about, to compel landowners who, residents who don't take care of their property appropriately, or who have things stored on their property that are not nice to look at visually, to deal with that. Nothing has happened. There have been complaints, no, I'm not dealing with the declaration of this area as ablated. We now have a situation, you can, you have a situation where you have a section of town which does not look nice. Simple. But the problem is not the rest, the new restaurant that's going in, and it's not the children's school that's there that looks lovely, or the other properties that are there, or the gas station which is grandfathered and wouldn't change. It happens to be five properties that are in various stages of being boarded up. And I don't know why you're going through a rehab zone reclassification as opposed to dealing with this property owner or using the tools we have as a borough to compel the property owner to deal with it. Any property owner can come in with a plan, and the planning board is authorized by state law to give variances and modifications to that plan so that it's workable. You could ask for a height variance, we all know what happened with that. You could ask for parking variances, I've seen those given. You could ask for all kinds of variances, and with a proper plan and five contiguous properties or more, you can come up with a very lovely, workable solution without spending a lot of money and reclassifying the whole area, which has other implications, the developers coming in, developers' incentives, tax relief, which you may not be in favor of, but somebody else some other day may be, which can also be given, and all kinds of other things. So I don't know why we're jumping ahead of ourselves and not taking the first steps, which are talking with the property owner and seeing if he is in fact even interested in redeveloping his property, because you can go through all of this and the property owners say, I don't care.
Right, so those are planning board questions?
Well, that's...
And let me just finish. This is a council meeting, so the planning board chair is going to hear it twice because you're going to have to repeat it at the planning board when he has a question.
Well, he hears it once, and he happens to have a very good memory.
Right.
I will give him that.
And he's doing a fantastic job, and you're going to have to come to that planning board.
But I'm not questioning that, but he has come to you, he has come to you as a council asking for authorization to do something. And I'm saying, why does he need it now? Has he explored...
That's where our authority ends right now. We've done everything we can do tonight. So you're, we can't answer your questions, we can't deal with you on this issue, you're going to have to go to his meeting.
But you have to vote tonight on, you are voting, it's an item on your agenda, to give him the authorization, to engage a planner, to look into whether this area qualifies as a rehabilitation district under state law. And that has significant implications. You're not asking to look at it to see if it should be rezoned or an overlay zone should be created, or you should work with the developer, or you're not meeting with the developers.
I'm sure that he will have very responsive questions.
What are you doing to that? I just want to know if you're intending to review... to give him the authorization, to engage a planner, to look into whether this area qualifies as a rehabilitation district under state law. And that has significant implications. You're not asking to look at it to see if it should be rezoned, or an overlay zone should be created, or you should work with the developer, or you're not meeting with the developers.
I'm sure that he will have very responsive questions.
What are you doing to that? I just want to know if you're intending to review, I guess it's Resolution one twenty?
Yes, he's going to answer your questions in a very eloquent fashion at his meetings, but we're not going to answer your questions tonight.
Obviously, you're not. I'm just making a statement right now about my concerns about your dealing with this issue, and giving him the charge to investigate it as a rehab district today, when other avenues have not been explored. That's what I had to say. And the third thing I had, I forgot, so it's okay. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might, I just want to advise the board members, and I'm sure Chairman Perino already knows this, but there is no blight designation for an area in need of rehabilitation. That is not a requirement of the law for a rehabilitation area. I want to make that clear. While the previous speaker did talk about some of the owners' things of redevelopment, that's not what we are authorizing the planning board to do. It is rehabilitation, it does not require a blight designation of any property.
Okay.
That's the third thing I just remembered.
Of course, of course, absolutely.
The Jeep dealership.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The Jeep dealership.
Which Jeep dealership?
There's only one Jeep dealership in town. The old Toyota building, which has now been approved by the planning board as a Jeep dealership. It is still, that is a blight, that is a hazard, that has not been touched, even with the new owners. I want to respectfully request that this council do whatever it can to compel the new owners to make that building safe, not a hazard. It has broken windows, it still has glass, it's not boarded up or shielded from the street. It's a hazard to anyone who happens to walk there. It has cars parked in front. It looks no different than it did when the prior person came to the planning board requesting that Jeep take it over. There has to be something that could be done to this new owner, to compel them to do something to the property so it isn't a hazard and a blight, and there I am using the words correctly, legally, for our community. Thank you.
Yes.
The administrator of the local council.
Tell me more faster, twenty-sixth Street. Since we have a drainage problem, I'm not an engineer, couldn't they put small French drain throughout that area?
I'm not an engineer either, we'll mention that to Mr. Hippel.
I don't know, but I'm listening, and it just can't be that we have a problem like this that can't be solved. We're in twenty seventeen, anything can be solved.
Am I understanding this because we're sitting on rock?
Yeah, but if you put a French drain underneath, put dirt, a French drain...
It's gonna be a hell of a drain.
You would drain, you know?
You're gonna blast the rock to put the drain throughout the rock?
No, no, on top of it.
Okay, well, we...
We'll mention it to the engineer.
We will dutifully relay that to Mr. Hippel.
A drain is only a pipe with holes in it, but water goes in and drains out somewhere else. And if you put a, if you put pipe underneath, and you put six inches or seven inches of dirt on top, you could put anything, it would drain.
We'll mention it to the engineer.
We'll mention it.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Willow Drive. First, I'd like to correct Mrs. Geiger's misinformation. The old Parkway Toyota building does not have a new owner, it's got the same old owner who's left it in this condition. It has a new tenant, but it's still the same owner. I'd also like to point out that a number of years ago, we spent what I recall as being one point three million dollars, and closed the field for two years, and inflicted construction on the neighbors, including me, for two years. And we didn't have a referendum. It was just done by the council, and none of these people who had children who benefited from that rehabilitation and are now grown, came here saying, "Oh, let's have a referendum and think about whether we really want to spend the money." And I really find it very disturbing that people who had no problems asking us to spend one point three million dollars to rehab the field when their children were young enough to benefit from it, now have a problem spending it on the next generation of children. I had no children. My father bought the house I live in when his children were all out of high school, and he had no problems spending his tax dollars on improvements to the field, including the snack stand, which was not there when he bought the house, for the previous generation of children. And I don't think that the current generation of no children in the house should be saying, "Oh, it's not us, so let's ignore it." I think that we, again, need to do the work. It's been compacted, it was, I have substantial questions about what happened the first time when we had two contractors go bankrupt before it was finished, and it needs to be done again.
I can't hear anything.
I know Miss Dagum, Miss Abari, you have a lot of important things to discuss, perhaps you could go outside, and the people in the back as well, I could hear everybody.
Not them, it's Mrs. Simon in...
Yes, well, it's that corner always. So if you have something you want to say, I'm going to welcome you to the microphone, but if you want to just speak among yourself, there's plenty of restaurants in town.
And I do think it needs to be done again, and I agree, we need to pursue a new method of dealing with the drainage.
Right.
The field the first time was lovely for about two years, and then all of the old problems came creeping back, because there is no drainage. Every time it rains, the path is flooded in four different locations, and the puddles are so wide that you have to walk through the mud, because you can't walk through the puddles. The infield of the full-size adult softball field runs across the path and is strewn because of the way the thing is now graded, because everything's settled, and it needs to be done. And it needs to be done in a way that hopefully will last longer than two years this time.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Yes, sir, he's over there. Can you do next?
Good evening. The mayor and the council members, I thank you really for working for this town so much.
Can you state your name, please, sir?
My name is Sonny O, fourth and Demerite Avenue, in West Crete.
And thank you for what you said, okay?
We are talking about the big project, like a million required, some ground, something, but the, I have a suggestion to reclassify the town, to buy shredding machines, because the identification theft is going on a lot. I personally, myself, I hold, classified the documents for twenty years in my desk there. Sometimes I go reportedly to shredding all documents here, but my town, I don't know how you classify to dispose the, your documents.
We had a, yeah, I'm sorry, so we had a shredding event last Saturday, where we spent from nine o'clock in the morning to one, to one in the afternoon at the DPW yard with the shredding truck, and perhaps even get my robo-call or another notice, but we do it once a year.
Once a year?
And we just had it, and we're gonna try to do it more often, but we had it last weekend.
Yeah, but the, like, once a year, that's not enough. So the EPO install, if you buy town budget, the logic first to the shredding machine, so personally, everybody can go and shredding machines use it. So if we cannot do it, maybe you can coin drop machines. So it's very easy for us, because the town residents, they feel like, you know, I just think myself would worry about it.
Yeah, that's a good point, you know, my wife is laughing, she's gonna go shred all my documents.
Everybody has their own documents in their home, so the...
We will look into it, thank you for mentioning that. Mark, perhaps you could take a look at that? Coin-operated shredding machine?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
A lot.
Lovely ideas, yes, sir.
We do do it, Mr. Benzer. Marvin Benzer, forty-eighth Burke Street, Engle Cliffs.
Forty-eighth, where do you live, sir?
Forty-eighth Burke Street.
Oh, Burke, yeah.
Yeah. I was under the impression that somebody either has or will be presenting a petition against me. I'm not sure if that was going to be on the agenda today or not, or if that's something's coming up, and I just wanted to, you know, present my side of the story for that.
Sir, in this room, you're safe. They only come and yell at me, okay?
I mean, I didn't have much to say, except to respond to what the petition was. I haven't seen the petition, so I don't know what it is.
We don't have any...
That's against me.
I think she could help.
Mr. Benzer, I think maybe what you saw on the agenda is a letter that was written about your situation, and it was given to the governing body, but I can assure you that this council is not doing anything or signing any petitions against you. In fact, we did receive today, and I quoted to the governing body, an email from the health inspector stating that everything was done with your pool.
Oh, okay.
And I informed them right away. But please be assured that we, as a governing body, or them as a governing body, are not signing any petitions or accepting...
Somebody was presenting a petition to you guys.
No, I have not been made aware of that.
Okay.
And what's on the agenda is the receipt of that letter.
Okay. Well, I haven't seen any petition either, I just heard that somebody...
There's no petition.
Rumors, there's always rumors going around.
This town has a lot of rumors, but not that one, so...
I'm getting a lot of misinformation about my situation with my pool. I'm glad to hear that I brought this email. Would I be able to get a copy of that email, by the way?
Sure, if you email tomorrow as a courtesy, I will give it to you.
I haven't seen that, you know, my mind is, that I am hearing a lot of misinformation about the situation with my pool, selective facts and everything, and I just want to be able to set the record straight. On a related note, I, I'm not sure if I should bring it up or not, I have a, I guess, a complaint with the way I'm being treated, or have been being treated by the Board of Health. But if everything is okay now, maybe I would reserve that, you know, for a later time, but I have some, I think I have not been being treated fairly by the Board of Health, and maybe at the right time, I would like to, you know, voice my concerns about that. I'm not sure if this is the right time or not, though.
To answer your concerns, I'm aware it's for about two years now, there is nothing personal against you, not at all. And I could speak on the, I understand, I've spoken to Arminay, you know, I'm friends with your wife. It's just guidelines and an ordinance that we need to follow.
I have some information that I can present, that you might not be aware of.
Sure.
Makes me feel that way.
If you want to come...
Maybe I want to, now...
You can stop by Borough Hall.
I don't want to, you know, create trouble, so maybe I'll...
Mr. Benzer, if you make an appointment, if you make an appointment with our Borough administrator, okay, and come in and speak with her, then you can feel comfortable, yeah.
I appreciate that. What was your name, sir?
Catherine Steinow.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Justin Agariff, three nineteen Castle Drive. I wasn't going to say anything, but since it's been brought up a couple of times, the major problem at the Woody Field right now is the drainage. And that has to be the first problem addressed before you do anything else, I think. I mean, there is no, no way you cannot do that. There are French drains, by the way, underneath, already, but they are probably compacted and filled, and they need to be cleaned out.
But we said that.
Redone, yeah.
Said the drainage problem.
But, you know, I wouldn't worry about the lights, I wouldn't worry about the infields and how they go, they have to be pitched, they have to be drained. And I think that's the only, that's the number-one thing I think you have to deal with. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I don't see anyone else. Have a motion to close the public portion. One favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to get down to the resolutions now, there are a lot of them, and I understand that council wants to go one at a time. So, and that's the Borough Clerk to read in the first one. Into the record, please. Number ninety-nine.
No, no, it's a title.
Title, comment, motion, vote.
Okay, we'll do it quickly. Resolutions twenty seventeen, ninety-nine, authorize change order for Pierce Velocity Pumper. I need a...
I just want to say one thing on this. We're getting a new pumper for the fire department, as you know, there's some changes that had to be made. Chief Drummond has been great to work with on this. He's a councilman professional when it comes to firefighting, and William Wu, Councilman Wu, met with him as well, and we support this.
And we're still within budget.
And we're still within budget, more importantly, yes, so, okay.
Ninety-nine, authorize change order for Pierce Velocity Pumper, pumper, motion?
So moved.
Second. Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One hundred, authorize mayor to sign federal equitable sharing plan for the police department. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
What is this exactly? That's my question.
It has to do with DEA funding, it's just an approval of the paperwork that was submitted to the mayor.
DEA funding?
Yep.
So, the Borough Administrator want to add anything to that?
It's a report that needed to be done for the Department of Justice for funds that were already spent. The report has to be submitted, it's done online, and the mayor needs to certify it.
Okay.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One oh-one, renewal of liquor licenses, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, motion?
So moved.
Yes, second.
Of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Again, sorry, I have a question.
So there are six licenses on here that are for renewal, or is that the total for...
Eight.
Exactly eight.
Eight, eight.
How many?
I don't know, okay. So there are eight liquor licenses in town?
That's total.
And they have to be renewed every year, otherwise they cannot sell liquor.
Okay, so it's one-time renewal every year of eight licenses, it's not like any additional...
No.
Okay.
We only have eight licenses.
Okay, yes.
Okay. E. O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One oh-two, accept TV donation from LG to the seniors' club, and if the seniors don't want it, I'll take it.
I just want to, I just want to publicly, well, I want to publicly thank LG Electronics for providing that to the senior citizens' clubs, and I think they're great, great neighbors and great manufacturers of televisions, so get rid of that big one that you have there and...
This plaque line from DVD two thousand.
Okay, keep the plaque, ditch the DVD here. Motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Who moved it?
Mark Moore.
And... Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One oh-four, resolution authorizing change funds. This is something that's done yearly.
Point of order, just on that one, for mayor, one oh-four, is that a typo? You're only giving the police ten dollars?
That's correct, and it, that's all it is, and it's just...
Change funds and petty cash are two different...
Right, right. That's it.
That should be done at the REOG meeting, and...
No, everybody else was getting a hundred, I thought it was...
No, and I, and I...
Because they have nominal costs to make.
Okay, all right. Okay, I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One oh-five, resolution for finance department petty cash, which again is different from a change draw.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Wu and N. Park. Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One oh-six, authorize to sign Bergen County Development Program Agreement. Need a motion?
So moved.
Um, okay. Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One oh-six, authorize to sign Bergen County Development Program Agreement. Need a motion?
So moved.
Um, okay. Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Can you just tell me what this is?
That's the question that I believe Mrs. Sabari asked. It's, um, so we can receive something.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it's two parts?
Yeah.
One is a?
An agreement to join, and one is the agreement.
Okay.
So, yes?
Yes.
Okay. O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One oh-seven, which is part of the same, uh, participation in Bergen County Community Development Program. Uh, need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One oh-eight, appoint a community development representative, and that's for the borough. That's also has to, uh, be done every two years, I believe. Uh, and the, and the mayor recommended Lauren Eastwood. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Um, who was the, I'm sorry, it's a community development representative?
Yes, and what they do is they would attend the meetings, which are about maybe three times a year, um, and put in for Englewood Cliffs.
Okay.
But the council has to approve whatever you're funding. Annually, in October roughly, they'll, um, ask for applications. You'll make a recommendation. Where the community development representative might come back with a recommendation on your behalf, um, we're probably only eligible for handicap applications for the borough. Um, and then you would have to pass a resolution by the governing body, as you do for any grants application, and then the grants application will be sent.
And Mr. Williams, a volunteer position?
Yes.
Volunteer. So the mayor recommended Lauren Eastwood.
Okay. Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One oh-nine, authorize approval of excess sewer rate. Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One ten, approval of state county board judgment, three-three-three Sylvan Avenue. And just, just to be clear, this was a tax appeal that we, that the governing body approved, authorizing, um, Mr. Bernstein to settle on behalf of the borough. This is now the judgment that was received, and we are voting on the judgment, and.
Just for the record, the property owner is Alfiro and Lucite.
It's in the resolution.
Where is it?
The Palastroni.
Palastroni. It's in there. Second line. I'm looking at the.
It's because it's Palastroni Management LLC.
Okay.
It's in there.
Oh, the first paragraph, second line. Okay, that's actually a different, but it's still Palastroni.
It's under a.
Foundation. If anyone has any, uh, conflict of interest, please recuse.
Okay. Uh, counsel person, I'm sorry, I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Counsel person of versa?
Recused.
E. Park?
So, I'm sorry, this is the settlement number, it's forty-second.
Right.
Okay. Um, and it, it wasn't a judgment by, in other words, it didn't go to trial, and it was in a judgment, as a settlement.
Settlement.
Okay. Uh, yes?
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
Same scenario with one eleven, approval of state county board judgment, twelve Willow Drive. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One twelve, approval to establish a sponsored bench program with purchase through the state contract.
Just wanted to mention that this is a program that I wanted to institute. Um, we're, we're looking at Witty Field, but our whole town is park-like, and, um, it's lacking in park benches. So there are public lands throughout the town where people walk, they walk their dogs, they take long walks. Some people don't want to walk too far from their homes because they can't. This may enable people to go further, have a break, sit down, relax, have a sandwich. Uh, so in terms of our park redevelopment, as they say, or as someone once said, every, every journey starts with a small step. This is a small step, okay?
And mayor, this is a wonderful, this is really a wonderful idea. I, I was driving through town the other day, and I saw a resident leaning up against a post. I actually stopped the car and got out, and I asked them if they were okay, and, um, they were rest, they were just taking a break from walking.
Right.
And I said, well, you know what? This, this is something that really could be helpful, because, you know, we have seniors walking and getting exercise, and there's no way to say.
And, um, Catherine's been a great help in helping me, um, look at how to do this and launch it. Uh, the, the idea is one thing, actually, the execution is another. So do you have anything to say on that, in terms of sponsorships and?
Uh, yes. What, this resolution assists with the authorization for, um, us to have solicited sponsorship for the benches, as well as look at other areas that we can help support it, uh, get it started with grassroots funding that we have in house now, and then have others come in and sponsor it. Uh, the superintendent, DPW, has been wonderful at helping how we're going to install it, recommending sites, uh, within the borough. If anybody knows a portion of right-of-way that you might think, you know, by all means, recommend it to us, so that we can look at it till the program grows, that we can consider it, because it's not just a bench. We want to make certain that it has a garbage can with it. If we're going to give somebody a place to sit, we certainly want them to be able to, if they can have their lunch, or whatever the case may be. We've also looked at plaques for the benches for individuals that may sponsor the program, so we can identify them as well.
So, um, yeah, I appreciate that, and I appreciate Mark, um, Mr. Neville helping you as well. Uh, it's, it's in the same thought process of the tribute trees at Witty Field, that somebody wrongfully said that we were going to tear up and renovate the park, and that's not true. We're extending that to, people could actually sponsor benches, like you've seen on boardwalks and other parks, in memory of somebody who, who died, okay?
I have just a question for you.
Yeah.
I'll ask you more about, um, I, I asked my couple residents, um, about the benches, and I think it's a great idea, and I, I'm sure we're not going to put them on, you know, front of people's home.
No, we're very.
Because I assure them that that's not the intention.
Yeah, the, uh, the operative, the operative words. Yeah, so the operative words are public property. Yeah. Not private property. That completely goes against everything I stand for.
I think the concern was that, you know, if they put them in the right-of-way, that technically could be by anyone's hands.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not the mayor's intention at all.
No, we wouldn't do that.
No, we mention right-of-way because we don't own, you know, the water tower has a nice grass area, so that's why we say right-of-way as well. So we'll ask, you know, the water company if we can place a bench there, maybe even get them to pay for it. Um, so that's why we mention right-of-way. But it's not in front of anybody's residential home.
I want to just make sure.
No.
Thank you.
I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
One thirteen, appro.
I'm going to step off the table for one thirteen.
By the way, we, we've had a track record here of fourteen unanimous votes, guys.
Um, okay. One thirteen, appro.
Before you read that. I'm sorry. But you go ahead and read the title for me, and then let me just pass it to everyone. That is a before and after of the encroachment that you are approving here. I reviewed it. It is not a permanent structure. Uh, it is a planter box. It was an existing encroachment that is being enlarged, um, in front of a home that's then apparently, um, what do you call it? Rehabilitated.
Renovated?
Renovated, renovated.
Rebuilt.
Rebuilt.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a new construction, okay. I, I didn't get into details. But anyway, that's the picture, before and after, and the agreement follows along the same lines of what we approved in our policy that we set a few meetings ago, and, uh, there will be a, uh, contribution towards the attorney's fees, et cetera. That's all in part of the agreement, and that's what the, uh, resolution provides for.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
One fourteen, authorized use of garage bay at the community building for emergency medical service. It's for the, our ambulance, just to store.
So what I wanted to.
And use the community building.
Right, so what I want to mention here is that, um, our Borough Administrator, Catherine Steinel, and she met in person, I called into the meeting, with representatives of the ambulance corps from Englewood Hospital Medical Center. They explained to us that the response times are, are getting longer because there's more traffic, um, coming up from Englewood, uh, so they'd like to improve the service to our town, as well as to our neighbors, uh, to the south and to the north. And, um, we used to have an ambulance corp, we still have an ambulance corp building, and so the logical thing to do was to, uh, invite them, uh, to, to station an ambulance in our town. And, uh, for, for several reasons, the, the ambulance corp building, not just because it's manned, ambulance corp building, but, um, it turned out that that's the right place for them to be. Uh, they could access, um, all residents in town much quicker, uh, reducing their response times, providing a better service, and, um, we already have the facility, which is underutilized. So, um, Catherine worked out the details with them, and we're here tonight to approve it, I hope.
I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Uh, just one question. This is the same kind of agreement we have with DPD. Do they really use those same bays? I mean, this is not anything, it was just, I guess they weren't.
This is the same ambulance, uh, service that used to be in town, um, and for some reason they're not. Um, so we're putting them back in the ambulance bay that the DPW currently utilizes for storage.
And want to make sure it's.
Yeah.
The same place, yeah, same place.
So Councilman Versa, that's a good point, actually. We've always had a contact with the ambulance corp, but we haven't had them stationed up in Englewood Cliffs for a while. I'm not sure why they, they, they left.
I, I don't know. They didn't get it.
They, they just stopped being here.
They were here.
Yes, right.
They were, yeah.
Yeah, so I, uh, I will yes.
Okay, thank you.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Okay, 115th, appointment of Borough Attorney pursuant to the RFQs, and we only received three RFQs for the position. The resolution has some X's in it that the mayor will have to verbally fill out.
Sure, so I recommend the appointment, or reappointment of Anne Marie Rizzuto. Have a motion?
Can we have a discussion?
Had second. Second.
Discussion, please.
Sure, yeah.
So, looking at the three applications that were submitted for the RFQ, one being Anne Marie Rizzuto, who's been our acting Borough Attorney since January of this year, and in her cover letter, it says that "I am the sole proprietor and employee of the above-named law firm," and the law firm being Dorsey &amp; Semrau. So, Anne Marie, I just have a question, like, are you-
I'm sorry, what?
So, the cover letter that you submitted to the town states that you are the sole proprietor and also an employee of the above-named law firm, so-
And the above-named law firm is the War Offices of Anne Marie Rizzuto.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay.
And it says "as of July 1, 2017."
Where does that say, uh, of Ju- ah, on the top, okay. So what is your status right now?
I am still up counsel in force, Aunt Camara.
Okay, and until when?
We've been talking about June 30th. First, we were talking about June 15th, then we were talking about June 30th. We are going to continue our up counsel relationship, except I'm not going to be a full-time employee over there anymore.
So, right now, I mean, I was going through the RFQ information, and right now, it seems like you have no office, you have no phone number, you have no professional liability insurance, you have no tax ID number, you have no staff. Your hourly rate is even more than what we're paying Dorsey &amp; Semrau, correct?
Yes.
What you're proposing is $140 an hour.
Right.
We're paying you $125 right now, and you want mileage.
Okay.
And you, your offices were in Persiphony?
Yeah.
So how many miles is that?
Twenty-five.
Okay, so, no, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Wait, wait.
So, I'm just looking at the RFQ, and I know one of the qualifications that we put out there was that we need a law firm with support, so that when you go on vacation, when you're out sick, and when you are in court, and we need to access our attorney, you know, we want a firm that has the support system. It seems to me that you don't have any.
Can she respond?
And, right now, you don't even have a door to hang your shingles, right? You mean, um, so-
So I'll let-
I just don't understand why we are appointing you, or the mayor is recommending to appoint you, when there's two other law firms that submitted RFQs that have the support system, and one of them is our tax attorney, who's familiar with Englewood Cliffs.
Okay.
So, that is my comment.
Here's what I'll say, Mrs. Rizzuto will speak to your comments, but I think one of the most important things, Councilwoman O, that you missed in your soliloquy is that Anne Marie Rizzuto is an excellent attorney. She's substantive, she understands what we need, and she's always available, she always answers the phone when I call her, and I think you've missed the most important points. All those other housekeeping matters, she's underway. I encourage people to have their own law firms, as you do, as I do. I practice what I preach, I encourage other people to do that as well, and Anne Marie is doing that now, and I'm very proud of you for doing it, and I congratulate you, it's a great step.
Mayor, I think you're missing the point.
All right, Mayor. Okay, I think she's going to respond here. I got all your points, you missed the big point, which is that she's a great lawyer.
Okay, so I've already made arrangements for an office share, which can come complete with staff, including reception, and copying, printing, scanning, typing capabilities, when I need them. I do most of the work myself. Most people who work at a computer, they use a secretary to do the mailing, the postage, the scanning, et cetera, but most lawyers do their own work. Only when I have a substantial, big matter, do I need someone to actually put together exhibits, for like a trial. That's number one. Number two, I have insurance in place on a particular effective date when I need it. Number three, I've made the arrangement for the office on a particular date when I need it. I'm not going to change my life unless I know there is a reason for doing it. That's not, that's the point. The other thing is, it's interesting that you want to talk about staff, when I have been virtually servicing the Borough of Englewood Cliffs on my own, with very little support from Dorsey &amp; Semrau, other than as I just described it. They do not provide me with a secretary, they do not provide me with an assistant. Many law firms don't do that. The attorney does the work themselves. That's why I communicate by email as much as possible, it saves the Borough money, it saves me time. I would really like to answer qualification questions, but I didn't hear any from you, Councilwoman O. I was a member, in fact, of the law firm of Eric Bernstein, and I have experience with Mr. Bernstein, which I won't review here. Certainly that office is qualified. Yes, they have staff. Yes, they charge for mileage, and they're seventy-five, they're probably thirty-five or forty miles away from here, okay? And all of my proposals, the hourly rate, the mileage, whatever else that there may be in there, is specifically noted as negotiable. I will also point out to you that one of the factors for Mr. Semrau not wanting to stay on was the fact that you pay a very low rate compared to many of his other municipal clients. I'm not complaining about that. What I am saying is that you do have several of your council being paid at higher rates than the Borough Attorney currently is, or that my proposal currently is. So, again, I don't think it's a matter of, you're looking at that, and yet you don't want to talk about the years of experience that are evident in my proposal, and the quality of work I have done. There have been disagreements maybe on some of the methods that have occurred during the six months, but I want to tell all you council members, I am open to working with each and every one of you. If you appoint me, I encourage you to reach out and talk to me like a human being. I'm here for everyone. No, I will not take on a major legal matter on one person's request. I will take on a major legal matter when it's an executive authority, or the mayor and council, like when you appointed me for Favaro. I do not anticipate being sick or absent, I never am. I plan my vacations, I plan my vacations around council meetings. I have handled four boards at once as a solo practitioner. I have backup. Fred Semrau's office is going to back me up, I'm going to back them up if I need that backing up. It's a rare situation where that might happen. In addition, I don't go to court at night. I go to court during the day, because I go to Superior Court, I go to the OAL, I go to the tax courts, I go to the state and federal courts that are open during the day. The only courts that are open at night are municipal courts, and usually I only have to do that for brothers and sisters. So, it's a rare occasion where I do that. Please, I encourage all of you to call me, question me about my qualifications, I'll even answer all of these questions again. I'm very proud of the work I've done so far for Englewood Cliffs. I want to work to make the community a better place, and I accept the unique challenge that this borough provides to a lawyer. And I am not saying, listen to me, I am not saying that in an amusing or funny way. We all know, I, in the six months that I have been here, have had any number of unusual legal situations which have challenged me, and which would have challenged any Borough council with twenty-five years of experience like I have. Any Borough council, Fred was challenged, all the municipal attorneys that I maybe consulted with or talked about, and the budget crisis, and a few of the other matters, all very unusual. I accept that challenge. I believe I can help the Borough get through, I believe I can make this mayor and council a better governing body. I hope you will give me the opportunity to do so.
I'm sorry, but I disagree. Thank, okay.
I think Councilwoman McMorro was next, and then we'll come back to you.
Um, I agree only with two, I don't, I'm sorry, Councilwoman O, I'm hoping that the way you phrase that, Anne Marie, it came across as pretty insulting, and I encourage anyone that's working in a large firm, if they want to take a chance and start their own business, especially as a female, to do that and take that step, and I applaud you for wanting to go out on your own.
Well, I have a tax regimen.
Okay, what I, I do agree with Councilwoman O on two points. No mileage.
Okay.
Sorry.
Negotiable.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't get it either.
No mileage, the Borough has, I've been strict with that with all the other-
All the councils?
All the councils, right, Catherine?
No, I just-
I see it, I see it in the bill, bill gets pulled, goes to her, she takes care of it, no mileage.
Gotcha.
And I'm really sorry, but your rate has to stay at 125. I agree with Councilwoman O on that, the budget's been set for the year, and you have to, you know, January's another year, but this year's already set and it has to stay at 125.
Okay. I, it depends upon the mayor and council's vote, obviously, but I'm willing to negotiate to the amount that you set.
Those are my two questions.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, got to it.
So, no mileage and 125, Councilwoman-
Do you want to go down that way?
No, no, go back to you, I just want to go to whoever has their hand up first.
Okay. Um, I don't agree with your standard of practice, and the reason why I say this is because back in April, I asked you for an explanation on the billing, correct? And for the one billing question I had, which was for 208, it was, I was mentioned at a council meeting, I, there was an email that Lizette forwarded to you the next day, just reminding you, please get Ms. Council, Ms. Park, Councilwoman Park, an explanation on the billing. You and I went back and forth for weeks, all right? Every email saying, "Call me, call me," and I said, "Just please give me a brief explanation." For two weeks, I get nothing, and then finally I get a written explanation, right? And your written explanation says, um, that you've been in this position, by February, I'm reading your email, "By February 8th, I only had been in the position of handling Englewood Cliffs for about four weeks."
Right.
"Since that time, I've improved my billing practices. At present, I usually identify each matter that I'm handling, and I identify the people I am in contact with, when it might be important, or by position in relationship to the client and the Borough of Englewood."
Correct.
Okay.
So, and let me just also say one thing about the February 8th billing, okay? You raised the issue, you questioned why the billing was 7.1 hours on that day. I asked you to call me because the simple explanation was, four hours was spent sitting here, and all I really should have had to explain to you was the three hours. But instead, I did the extra work because you refused to call me, which was the first time that I reached out for you. I've since reached out for you three more times with the request for you to call me, but yet you don't want to, so be it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Park, is there any substantive issue that you're raising really, or now, like personal and political?
No, it's not, it's not personal or political, okay?
I want to hear substantive.
Okay, so, so I've been reviewing-
Hold on, hold on, Chief Chaffey, I was told by Chief Germanes that we cannot block that door, so please have a seat, or, you can't stand there, though, I'm sorry. Okay.
He's a fire guy.
Thank you.
He's a fire guy.
Well, he told me that we cannot have people standing there, and, well, sir, you cannot stand there. Please remove yourself from that entrance, thank you.
Okay. So, I've been reviewing all the bills from the previous attorneys, meaning when Dawn was here, from Dorsey &amp; Semrau, and when Brent Holman was here prior to, and if you read all of their invoices, it actually says exactly who they spoke with, how long they spoke with, and what they spoke about, right? Your May invoice, which we just got, for seventeen thousand and change-
That's Fred's May invoice.
You work for him right now.
Right.
Can we continue?
Yes. Doesn't say who you spoke with, doesn't say what you spoke about, has nothing in here about your work, right? So, then I asked you for emails, right?
All right, before you go there, let me answer your question about the billing practices of Dorsey &amp; Semrau. After Dawn was replaced by me, because apparently we needed a change, our firm needed a change, okay? I continue to identify to this day, every single matter that I work on, with parentheses, if I call it litigation, I will name the litigation. I generally will say, "Discussion with Borough Representative, or Borough Administrator, or Borough Clerk, et cetera." Now, I recently learned that the billing clerk in Dorsey &amp; Semrau has been taking out all references to matters, and I am not in charge of the law firm of Dorsey &amp; Semrau, he is. I want you to know that apparently at some point in January or February without me, because you must also understand, I do not see the bills when they go out the door. I hand them in every day, with the identifying information. It gets done by a billing clerk. Now, if you called me, I would have explained this to you, but we'll do it in public. Let me explain something to you. When Dorsey &amp; Semrau sends the bill out, I don't see it. And, by the way, seventeen thousand, the monthly retainer for Dorsey &amp; Semrau is seventeen five, I've agreed to limit to a fifteen thousand monthly retainer. So, that's number one, but besides that, I did not know that they were deleting my references in my billing that I was handling in. I didn't know it.
So for the last six months, you had no idea that all of your bills-
No.
-different from Dawn's, which has exactly, telephone call with Carol McMorro regarding pending issues, point three. Telephone call with every person named, right?
That's correct.
You, you did not know for six months that there was nothing on there about who you spoke with, what work you did, and-
Look, this is, this is fine, okay.
Well, this is part of the discussion that's on the agenda, correct?
Councilwoman Park, you have failed to mention one substantive issue regarding the work performed.
What do you mean?
No, no, you're, you're being political.
I'm not being political.
This is exactly why we need Anne Marie here, okay?
Anne Marie, I am honestly on the verge of calling the Ethics Committee on you.
You probably did already.
I didn't.
Because all you people do.
So, I cannot agree, well, you know what?
You're an attorney, so-
Exactly.
If you're threatening someone with ethics complaints, then it comes right back at you, so be careful.
That's fine.
You're also an attorney, too.
I have no client who's ever said that I've never done anything unethical.
I never insult anyone's profession, okay? Go ahead, and, well, hold on, I want to hear from other people as well.
I didn't say anything yet.
You didn't say anything yet?
No.
All right, go ahead.
I've asked her for emails for over a month and a half ago as well, that I did not receive.
Hold on a second, first, we're following Rules of Order, Robert's Rules of Order, everybody gets to speak once, and then if I decide, you get to speak again, okay? So you've all spoken, except Councilwoman Zaverta has not, Councilwoman McMorro has the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman, if we can keep that subject, the other subject that you're interjecting about your requests here under new business, because it's already listed, and just stay focused on the Borough Attorney. I, I'm, listen, you're also an attorney, I think you just crossed the line here with how you spoke to her, and, and, excuse me, Councilwoman, I want to say this to you in the most respectful way, okay? She just got off of the dais. You were just so out of line, you talked, hold on, hold on. You're talking about calling the Ethics Board on someone who's telling you that she had no control over the billing practice from her present location of where she is. I want to let you know something, and Catherine, you're sitting right here now, too. How many other attorneys did we have to call to ask them to please be more specific about their billing practices? I can, I can say it, because, hold on.
But that's not why I want, it has nothing to do with the billing practice.
You're out of order.
Answer it.
You're out of order.
I'm explaining to you, Mr. Bernstein's office, we had to help them to understand what our needs were, what our, what we wanted, what we expected. Every, every firm has a different way of doing things. So we had to work with Mr. Bernstein's office, and I know Janice even had to get involved with that, because it wasn't being done to the way that we had hoped it would be. And we also had to do that with Mr. Ruderman's office. Catherine, did we not have to ask Mr. Ruderman to-
I've asked him to break down blocks.
Yes, this happens, it's, it's, it's part of understanding what our needs are, but you're accusing her of doing something wrong. And to start saying you're going to call somebody else-
She's talking about twenty-five years of experience, she doesn't even know how to correctly bill something.
Excuse me, excuse me, we do not have the floor.
Let me finish, please.
Finish quickly.
I am trying, but I keep getting interrupted. But stop.
I do.
No, it's okay, you've said enough, you've said enough.
Yes, he called me today.
I just don't think it's proper to say right away, to pull the Ethics, you did that to the mayor and I too, and so you're reporting us to everywhere, and it's not, you know, if you don't get what you want immediately, or not understand, you don't just threaten you're going to report people, you know, it's just not right.
It's okay, it's not a problem. Councilwoman Park, would you like to add anything?
Uh, yes, we are already in the middle of the calendar year, so at this time, changing any law firm, that'll make more, you know, the burden for us, and to expense wise, the burden for our town, that's why I want to go with her, and she did a good job last couple years, and, and, not years, a couple months.
It feels like years.
Yeah, that's why, just, we wanted to go with her.
Thank you, Councilwoman Park. Councilwoman Wolf?
Yeah, I think, for me, my interaction with Anne Marie, she's answered all the questions I've had over the last couple months. Bringing a new council on board, it's going to take a lot of time and effort to get them up to speed. You know, a lot of the issues in our town are unique, and just a lot of work would need to go into that. I think, you know, some of the points brought up, I think they're issues that can easily be addressed, billing, you know, I think Anne Marie, if you have more clarity with respect to your descriptions, even while you're still with Dorsey &amp; Semrau, you know, that would be great, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, and I would just add as a final word on this, respect begets respect, okay? So if you respect someone, and you speak to them professionally, they will respect you right back. Okay, can I have a motion?
We didn't have a last-
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'm sure Anne Marie is a decent attorney, I have no, I don't personally have much confidence, and I'm not saying she's good or bad, I'm just saying I don't have much confidence from what's gone on on the council since January. But my bigger concern is, is not the way things are billed, but how much has been billed. So, I went back to look, just do a little research, listen, whoever you want to appoint your point, I think we have competent people that have sent in proposals, so I think they all seem pretty competent to me. But in 2015, from January to this date, July, June 14th, the 2015 attorney billed us $24,000. In 2016, from January 1st to this date, that Borough Attorney billed us $47,000. From January 1st to this date, we've been billed $83,000. Either somebody's doing way too much work, doing work the wrong way, that it needs to be changed the way it's being done, or we're being billed improperly, and I don't mean that in a negative way, just something's not right.
Those can't be the right numbers for 2015.
These are, these are the reports I got from our-
No, Councilwoman, I'm just saying, I'll get you those numbers, but those are not the numbers.
Okay, well, I'm just reading our, it's not my made-up report, these are the reports I asked the finance department.
Can I see them for a second, so you can-
So, let's just move on.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Zaverta.
So that's what we started.
We're, we're taking what you're saying with a grain of salt, because I don't believe those numbers either, but we'll check on them.
Okay.
By the way, there are plaintiffs in this room suing the town who are making those legal fees go up, okay? And that's what happens, you sue, we have to defend, okay? As frivolous as it is, we still have to defend.
So, I'm, regardless of who's suing who-
Scott Simon Geiger here, Favaro here, he's not here.
It has to do with, with what, with the issue at hand, not about whatever else is going on out there.
Order.
Thank you.
Order.
So that, to me, is a greater concern, and the fact that, again, Anne Marie, no offense, but we need somebody who's, who does have an office, who does have a staff, and we did have people that came in with that. I'm not so sure I feel comfortable spending my taxpayers' dollars to start your business, and as, although I encourage everybody to start a business, I'm a small business owner, independent, starting my own, I get it, but I don't see how I can make it the responsibility of those taxpayers to fund your investment in your business, and-
You're not funding anything, Councilwoman Zaverta, she's working for her fee, just like you and I work for our fees.
But we're, we're going to hire her based on the assumption that she's going to get an office, or she's going to get whatever else she has, you know?
That's how you started your firm, I started my firm, we all started with something or nothing, you know, and we built it up.
She already has an office.
She has an office, you weren't listening. I haven't heard, by the way, I haven't heard one substantive issue from, from that side, other than just the attack.
I'm not attacked.
Just a traditional knee-jerk attack.
See, right away, if someone doesn't agree with you-
Are you attacking her?
If someone doesn't agree with you, you want to challenge them.
But I'm just saying, I haven't heard anybody say she's got a good lawyer. She's a good lawyer.
I never said that.
Oh, oh, Alan Park just said she is, okay.
You talked to me, I have the floor, ma'am.
They're going to give you points back there, right?
I never said that to Anne Marie, and I would never say that to Anne Marie.
Pass that paper down.
So that's not the point. My point is just what I said, don't make it different, don't change my words.
Right, you have nothing substantive to say.
No disrespect at all to Anne Marie.
You are disrespecting her.
I am not.
You are.
I just said, I don't think it's my responsibility to invest taxpayers' dollars.
You all should be grateful and thankful that she has done such a great job for the last six months, okay? Because she's the, the first lawyer that we've had here who actually understands how to deal with the issues, who's not afraid to act, who's not afraid to take on people who are suing the town with frivolous litigations that are not based in fact, law, or anything else, they're pretend things, okay?
Councilwoman, can you pass that down for a quick second?
She's the first person, so I'd like to have a motion.
I can show it to you later. More than it's my favor, I'll show it to you later.
I'd like to have a motion.
It's probably more like my- It's from our, I'm a second. From our, I'm a second.
We have a second, can we have a roll call?
I'm sorry, who's second here?
William Park.
Okay, uh, 115, appointment of borough attorney with a not to exceed $15,000. That's missing, what's the resolution?
$15,000, a month?
No, no, for the year.
Oh, no, it's a month.
No, no, we're not doing that.
Wait, wait, no, wait. No. I have another question.
This is not the negotiation table, by the way.
Right, excuse me.
Talking about the terms now.
Hourly, right?
This is ridiculous. This is not the negotiation table, why are we talking about the cap?
I'm asking for proposals for people who think they're going to.
Okay, we, we're going to negotiate a not to exceed amount.
We're doing hourly right now.
Or we could do hourly, I don't care how you want to do it.
Hourly, 125 an hour, the way you want it.
You don't. What do you want, what do you want, a not to exceed?
Yeah, I mean a not to exceed on a monthly basis.
On a monthly basis.
Or annual, uh, but, uh, I mean, that's, that's.
All right, shut off, Catherine.
Catherine?
Greg, not how this is done.
All right. Sorry. All right, Fred, just do one with the 75, that's all I'm saying, thank you.
Contact negotiation. We're here, go on, contact.
Let's go.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, please.
I think we need to table it.
We have a motion to table.
Yeah, motion to table.
We'll go, we have to table first?
Motion to table.
Motion pending.
I second that motion.
There's a, there's a motion pending.
I need a motion to go to close session.
No, before that.
Yeah, motion to table, let's just table this and we'll discuss this later.
Yeah, we, we, let's have a motion to go into closed session, do you have a second?
But nobody seconded your motion before.
Call it, can we even?
Mark Park seconded it.
Yes, you can. What?
Can we go, just? All, all in favor going into closed session?
It doesn't matter, it can go into closed session if you choose.
All right.
Hold on, read the motion to, read the mo, hold on, hold on, the motion to close.
Second it?
The motion to close has to be with respect to contract negotiations. If you want me to come in and get interviewed, I'll come in and get interviewed.
No, 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 no.
Second.
Can you repeat that, please? I need a motion to come out of closed.
Do you have a motion to come out of closed session, please? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you got a second down there. All right, so, Councilwoman McMorris, can we have a motion to, um, appoint Ann Marie Rizzuto as council?
Uh, I make a motion to appoint Ann Marie Rizzuto as borough attorney, uh, not to exceed 12,500 a month, 125,000 an hour, and no hours.
It's actually 12,000 a month.
12,000. 12,000.
Yeah, that's okay, yeah. Second.
Not to exceed. Not to exceed. That doesn't mean it's going there.
Right.
That's not to exceed.
All right. Can, uh, the motions have been made, can I have a second? Second. William will have seconded, can I have a roll call?
Councilperson Versa?
Sorry.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorris?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Mayor, it's a three-way tie, I, you need to pass your vote.
It's a two-way tie.
I'm sorry, it's a two-way tie.
I vote yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 115, authorize mayor to sign union agreement with USWA. I need a motion.
Second.
Second.
Councilperson Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
117, authorize.
I just want to say Catherine, for all, I mean, what's that, for all that work, I know, what's that story, Catherine finished it.
Thank you.
Very good job, everybody.
Good job, yes.
And I know the staff.
It was, it was the, uh, well, I won't say it, that, thank you, appreciate it.
Resolution 117, authorize the hiring of expert witness in the matter of Borough Vengable Cliffs versus Bowswell Engineering. I need a motion.
Some move. Second.
And, uh, councilperson Versa?
Um, yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
118, authorize the hiring of part-time summer seasonal help. Need a motion?
Some move.
Councilperson Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
119, authorize the helicopter landing at Witty Field for the Junior Police Academy, and this is something we do every year, uh, count.
Except last year.
Oh.
So, you are not considering?
Yeah, it's a land, it's a landing, just for the kids to see the helicopter.
Except last year, no Junior Police Academy.
Okay, councilperson's, uh, I'm sorry, I need a motion?
Some move.
Second. Councilperson Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
120, this is the resolution we spoke about with Chairman Carino, uh, resolution 120, referring study of B3 zone to planning board, I need a motion.
Some move.
Uh, I'm going to say it was Ann Park and McMorris?
Yes.
All right, well, we'll give it to Councilman Park.
I'm on my, my last, my last.
Councilperson Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
And we added, uh, during caucus, we added an extra resolution, it is resolution 122.
Wait, you, you need one.
Okay, I just want.
121.
Oh, sorry. Uh, 121, need a motion, uh, for authorize mayor to sign AT&amp;T ground installation of HVAC?
Some move.
Second.
Councilperson Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
And resolution 122, authorize the borough engineer and borough attorney to conduct a limited initial review regarding 200 per unit. I need a motion?
Some move.
Second. Councilperson Versa?
Yeah, it's just for, it's stuck, right, just won't leave that out. Yes.
Very, very tiny test, test.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, next up is the ordinance, uh, 17 dash zero six, capital improvement ordinance, this is a public hearing, do you have a motion to open to the public, or do you need to read it first?
Uh, I apologize, uh, I don't know. Nobody, no, I have it back.
I have it.
All right.
Okay.
Bonds ordinance 2017-06, for a public hearing, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements in the acquisition of new additional, uh, replacement equipment and machinery, new communication, new communication and signal syst, signal systems equipment, uh, new additional furnishings and a new automobile, including original apparatus equipment in buy and for the Borough Vengable Cliffs in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $984,560 to pay the cost thereof, making a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such an appropriation, and to provide the issuance of bond anticipation notices, notes, in anticipation of issuance of such bonds.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, Kevin, motion to open to the public?
One move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard? Uh, if you do so, just please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and only, you can only speak to this ordinance.
Just a very simple question, uh, Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue, I see you were doing, uh, some things for the senior center, and, um, I, I know there had been mention of getting us new tables, is that what this is, the new tables? That's it? Okay, that's what I just wanted to know, thank you.
And chairs.
And chairs.
Okay, anybody else? Yes.
Deborah Savari, 106 Hollywood Avenue, um, the work being done in the police department with the locker rooms and the renovation of the public bathrooms, did we find out if we were going to have to remove asbestos, or are we just now authorizing?
We can't do that one, not till this.
So, the testing hasn't been done? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Kevin, motion to close the public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I can read.
I need a motion?
No, motion, right. Motion to approve?
I need a second. Second. Councilperson Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
The second, um, ordinance that is up for first reading is 17.
17-07.
Yep, and it's ordinance revising fees for the building department and property maintenance, and the public hearing will be July 12th. May I please have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Uh, removed it?
No, I did.
Okay, and, well, let me just read the full title, ordinance 17-07, in ordinance amending the code of the Borough Vengable Cliffs to revise certain fees for chapter nine entitled Building and Housing and chapter 10 entitled Property Maintenance Code. Councilperson Versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Um, I have a question, so the fees are going to be increased, what is increased?
Um, the fees are being increased to mirror the UCC fees through the state uniform construction code. Um, this is an anomaly, uh, the building inspection fees in the borough, for some reason, they need to be chronically increased per service, whereas the rest of our inspection fees actually are written to mirror the UCC code, so it automatically goes up. So, what we've done is we increased these fees, because we had to increase our other ones that automatically do so, to mirror the UCC code to have consistency. However, in here, we have placed wording that for the future, this will also increase when the UCC does go up, so you don't have to keep revisiting it. Um, as far as the property maintenance portion of this ordinance, it deals with fines, because our fines are so, um, irrelevant in a sense for property maintenance, it doesn't, it's not resistant for a property owner that just doesn't cut their grass all year long and pay a landscaper, and then just come in and pay a hundred dollar fine.
Right.
So, we've, um, reviewed that to make it, um, a deterrent at this point, to start to take care of their properties.
So, just, number one, the renovation operations, those increases are complying with UCC?
Yes, they mirror it, that's what we wrote it on, and that's what I checked with the building department. It went from $24 per 1,000 to $34 per 1,000. So, we were under charging, that's, that's, uh, the UCC authorizes this.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes. Jips? O.?
Yes.
McMorris?
Yes.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Okay. Again, the public hearing is July 12th.
Okay, uh, so for New Business, I have one additional item that I mentioned earlier. Um, I, I just want to point out to everybody that the, the small American flags that people usually hold in their hand, um, I've seen them in town put in the, in the ground, uh, but under federal law, the flag itself, the cloth part, is not allowed to touch the ground, and, and a lot of those flags are not intended to be in the ground, because they fall over and they're not storm resistant, so, you know, I have a respect for our flag, and, and in compliance of federal law, if you see that, um, you, you need to point that out or, or fix the situation, so it's just something that I find as a little pet peeve, yeah.
Uh, we also need to add one more thing on the new building business, um, the board fees, we didn't discuss it when the chairman was here, under his portion of the agenda, so if we can just go into that a little, so we can have an ordinance for the next meeting there.
Do, do you want to speak to that, or?
I can speak to it, absolutely.[1499.02]
You want to do that now?
Yeah. The, I met with the chairman of the board, as well as his secretary, Winona, who handles the planning procedures, and one of the issues we did go over was the piece that the planning board charges, it doesn't really cover special meetings, for which all the professionals are being paid, and essentially, our secretary to the board is showing up and not being paid at all. So that's something we would like to address in that board fee, because if special meetings are needed, and at one point, we had over nine of them, we're having our secretary show up for nine additional meetings without compensation. And these meetings are paid for by the vendor, or the commercial property or private property that wishes to have a special meeting, they're paying for it out of their escrow account anyway. This is not us paying for this. So essentially, if they're requesting additional services, then they really should pay for them, and our staff shouldn't be required to show up without compensation. So that is one of the main issues we're addressing here, as well as we're addressing the cap on the fee for the board's attorney per special meeting. So if the meeting goes three hours, the meeting goes six hours, there's a cap on what can be charged, so that we can better explain it to our applicants. So that's what the board ordinance, and we have a resolution from our board requesting that adjustment, so the Borough Attorney is going to adjust the board's fees for next meeting, so that this way you understand why we're doing that. And as well as the salary ordinance, excuse me, I'll be adding that to the salary ordinance, because our secretary is also a full-time employee, and we're obligated to make certain that we take taxes out, so I have to have it in the salary ordinance as well.
After we discussed the other items that are on here, there was something I spoke with Catherine about, maybe I had to move some there. Short thing, I just wanted to...
What was it?
Catherine, I had spoken, and we'll have more information ready for the July meeting, because to deal with putting out like a newsletter to the town, coming from the borough, in the newsletter will be update from VPW, update from each department having something, giving the actual information from the Borough Planning Board. In the past, they used to have something like that, it was done, it was used on the cliffs, they got a lot of correct information out to the town, and we're going to just look at funding, see, you know, which account, this, this one trusts and everything, see where we can, how we can arrange that, but I think it's something that we need to go back to, it's been lacking.
So you want monthly versus quarterly?
I think quarterly.
Right.
No, monthly.
Quarterly.
I'm not going in the newspaper business there.
It's not a good business.
Quarterly, and we're probably hoping we'll get out one this quarter, but, you know, we'll have more information for the council, so we just check the finances and have more of an update, but I just wanted to get permission to work on that with Catherine.
I'm fine with it. Do we need that?
No, you don't need that.
Okay, that's fine, all right.
If your meeting was... No, sorry.
No. Okay. You want to do your new business?
Okay. This was bad timing, I guess, but anyway, Councilwoman Park has made several requests over the past couple of meetings, or since the last meeting, I'm not sure, asking for some omnibus requests for communications. Now, perhaps I can deal easily with point number one, which is that Councilwoman Park wants communications between our office, Dorcine Semrau, and the mayor and council president. The estimation of hours that I have for trying to get all communications is, I just don't really know how I can do it, but Fred may have come up with the solution. All of the computer files that I have, that I have organized, are by subject and topic or department, or I have, for example, a computer file for every council meeting that we do. Even the ones I don't attend, I keep track, and that's where the documents will go. So the bottom line is that in my office currently, and I'm sure as I continue in my own office, I have probably three hundred or so file folders and subfolders and sub-subfolders that tend, like, for example, in Outlook, you can't search by, you can search and get a reasonable result by searching by topic. You can search in subject. It's very difficult to pull out an email that's from Fred Semrau and the mayor and the council president. But Fred has taken onto himself, so, listen, I estimate it could take anywhere from ten hours to thirty hours. It's not legal work, and that's why it's on the agenda, because the council wants me to do that kind of work. And it's only for a limited period of time, obviously, it's from January first to the president, or I assume I'll make the date of ending. I don't have any problem doing it, I just don't really know with respect to emails how to do it. Fred seems to have come up, and since it's technically, it's his communications, it's his firm, it's his computer, he has looked, hired some kind of IT specialist that knows how to do things with parameters with Outlook. And it's extensive, but apparently Fred is willing to bear the cost of that, so as to respond to this request. Now that, I think it's only emails, and maybe we can figure out from there specifically what we might want.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
This is Councilwoman Park.
Yes.
Councilwoman Park, will you withdraw that request?
No.
Okay.
I just have one question for Councilwoman Park. Councilwoman Park, can I, I just want to ask you, why do you, why do you want this? Why do you want to incur this cost on the council?
There's no cost, first of all, because I spoke to Fred, and there's no cost, and again, this is sort of...
But she's waving it.
Well, no, if we go to court on this, it's explanation on your billing. Again, if you look at your billing, it says, May tenth, telephone call with Borough representatives, Borough Police Representatives, doesn't say who, it doesn't say, again, this is May tenth, 2017, you billed for...
I have Fred's office down.
Okay, one hour and sixty minutes on just telephone calls, just telephone calls.
You need to wait, because you're out of order right now, she had the floor.
No, she asked me a question, I'm responding.
You answered it.
I didn't. So there's an hour and sixty, hour, I'm sorry, one hour and...
You said this already.
One point six hour, no, I'm not.
There you are.
One point six hours of billing on just telephone calls, and it doesn't say to who, it doesn't say, doesn't say anything, again, and so I would limit my scope of the request. Had she billed properly, then I know.
I'd bill the cost.
Okay, and I would bring that up with Fred. Um, so...
I'm going to have to call you out of order. She had the floor.
No, she didn't.
Yes.
She asked me a question, and I responded.
That doesn't give you the right to keep talking. Okay.
How am I supposed to respond?
Oh, and by the way, are you willing to pay for it?
There is no charge, I spoke to Fred Semrau.
Everything has a charge, nothing is free, okay? I take that as a no. You're not withdrawing, and you're not...
First of all, I'm entitled to this information, and you are blocking, right? Yes.
I have the floor. I have the floor.
All right.
It's like...
You're out of order, you're out of order. We follow Robert's rules, we adopted those, you voted for those, follow them. Councilwoman McMorris, you have the floor.
I just want to be able to get a thought out without being interrupted, please, Council, please, just let me ask you one question. Okay, why do you, I hear that you want the information, but why do you only ask for all of this work for emails from the mayor and myself? Hold on, I want to finish first, because if you really want information, you should want all emails between boroughs. Let me finish, you just can't let someone finish the sentence.
I didn't, I didn't answer, go ahead.
All right, you don't have the floor, she had it for another thirty seconds. This is getting crazy, all right, go.
You're not asking for emails for Councilman Park, or Councilman Will, or Councilwoman O., or Councilwoman Aversa?
She asked for that initially, let me just stop.
I asked for all of it.
Initially, and when I replied back, and I asked her to call me, but she didn't want to call me and discuss it, I replied back that you're not asking for a topic or a subject, I don't know how to do this. So then she said, I will shorten my request, instead of between all council members, I want it between the mayor and the council president. So she adjusted it, however, she didn't adjust the amount of work that will be required for it.
I really want to go on to this one.
Yes, please. But I just want to give that explanation, to be fair. She adjusted her request.
Everyone is entitled to information. I don't know about any of these emails, but are they all on between you? I mean, I don't know, or you, hold on, or you, I don't know, so should I start putting them in the same order? I want copies of all of your emails.
Sure.
I want copies of all of Lori's emails. Should we do this? We're wasting time and not being productive. Okay, let me tell you what happened when I was on the council in 2012, I know you don't want to look at that, but unfortunately, it's a reality, because this is what happens. If we were doing jobs, I didn't get copies of emails of anything that went on between Councilwoman Aversa, Councilwoman O.
You should have asked for them, then.
You know what Joe Perici did? He passed an executive order that you aren't allowed to ask any questions of anyone, that no one was allowed to ask, no police, I have the newspaper on me, I'm going to do that. In fact, there is a standing order.
Those are the old times, though.
There is a standing order, right now, there's a standing order that Joe Perici passed that we haven't revoked.
Well, I don't think there's anything standing from Joe right now, okay?
You need to deal with that, Joe.
Look, here's my problem.
That has nothing to do with me. That's what I know as well.
I just want to say this, because we're supposed to set the example for the, hold on, folks, folks, this is what I want, this is what I want, folks, I want to be surrounded by a council that's serious, okay? I really want to be, we have, we have Whittyfield renovation, we have ten litigations relating to the police department against the borough, okay? We have other litigations in this town, we have union contracts that we're dealing with, we have a recreation program that we're trying to rebuild, we have budgets to work out.
That's right.
We have, we have the fire department, we're getting them a pumper. We have serious matters to deal with, okay? Those are the ones I'm going to deal with. You could play games and reindeer games, I don't care.
It's not games when you don't tell us about anything.
You know everything.
Mayor, you don't tell us about anything, and that's been my contention from day one.
See, the problem is that you think you just get to say whatever you want without backing it, okay?
Okay, so let's go, I actually have a backup, all right? On June fourteenth, which is today's meeting, we keep the perimeter packet on June ninth.
All right, I'm calling a recess. You could keep talking, tell us.
Call the recess.
We're not going to be there.
You want to know why I'm doing this, I'm telling you why I'm doing this.
You're out of order, learn to respect order, okay? Does anyone other than Alan or Carol have anything to say? All right. And what's the, what's the crux here? Do we have to vote to approve this?
No, no, listen, at for item number one, my boss, who does the billing, and apparently has changed the billing to take out information that Councilwoman Park wants, has agreed to pay for this, presumably so that she can fill in the blanks on the billing. It's fine. He's agreed to pay for this, there is no, if I have to do any review work versus Fred, Fred can do it for free, if I have to do any review work, I will let the Borough Administrator know, and we'll figure it out.
Well, you're going to need approval from the council to do that. I'll tell you right now, I'm not approving a waste of time, okay?
Okay, next point, next point is that after the request to me, and my kind of, I'm not reluctant to do it, I don't know how to do it, and some, there is some IT guide, but anyway.
When did I ask you for this?
Really, really, how many emails have I written to you in response, all along the way?
Okay, but I think three.
You don't have the floor.
Apparently, when the request came in, Lizette seems to recall that I said that I would call you. I knew I couldn't call you, because you refused to talk to me on the phone, so I probably sent you an email, please call me. You didn't call me, fine, we wrote by email, there's five, six, or seven emails. I'm sorry it's taking so long, I can't do it on my...
It's been over two months.
Next point, and I'm very sorry, and when did Fred stop your...
No apologies, no apologies.
Okay?
No apologies.
Days two ago?
It took him less than a week.
Okay, because he was ignoring it for months, right? Okay.
All right, just go on.
Next, is the same problem for your Borough Administrator. She cannot search Outlook reasonably without the subject or topic. She's willing to spend all of the hours that, I mean, I don't need to talk to you, what for you. I'm more than willing to fulfill the request, I just need the time to do it. Yeah. And there's certain things I can't release as the administrator. I've spoken to Councilwoman Park about those limitations, they're hicker personnel, because in a borough form of government, there's personnel matters that can occur between, at the level of myself and the mayor, that doesn't necessarily rise to the level of the governing body, based upon the fact we may not elevate a personal matter to that record. So it will take a while, but I can work on it if, you know, that's what we need to do.
Well, is that going to...
That condition in my office that I can't...
Are we going to, are we going to incur expense doing this?
Her time.
The time that I allocate.
And you're going to take time away from other projects to do this, right?
Well, yeah, I would do that, yeah.
We have a lot of projects. Right, so I do not want government coming to a halt, because one councilwoman decides that she needs information that she's probably already had, but just wants to waste our time, that's how I...
If I had it, I wouldn't ask for it.
Yes, you would, in fact, I think you would, because you do have it, and you've been invited to meetings, and you've been copied on emails, but you're not responsive, until you get in a public setting, and then you want to make a show of it all. And I'm not part of your show, okay? I'm part of a government, okay? And I'm here to run a borough, and I know you guys are shaking your heads, but that's what we're doing, we have an agenda, and we're pushing through it, despite your attempts to be obstacles, you will not stop me, okay? We have a lot of good things to do, all right. Go. Yeah, I've seen that written too, yeah, 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 in terms of, in terms of that, yeah, I know, that's a nice comment, right? Yeah.
Don't voice the board.
All right. If you can't sit there and quiet, leave, really, that's really what it comes down to.
There's one thing that I know was requested to be put in here in discussion with these, I have no problem, I have nothing to hide, just going to have all my emails, I'm going to get them here. The problem I have is in whatever's being released, how are we protecting the borough and ensuring the confidentiality is going to be maintained?
Well, that's why you need attorney to review it all.
No, no, no. I don't know what emails there are that are going to be turned over, but, Mayor...
I am the client, there is no attorney-client privilege here.
You don't have the floor, you're out of order.
Understanding me, again, because you're playing for the audience in the back there. This is not a show, it's not live camera action, I know the camera's there, and it's going to go right back to your boss, all right? We're trying to do business here.
Who's my boss? Who's my boss?
Okay.
I have no idea.
I want assurances from this council, from the attorney and the administrator, that whatever is turned over, whatever it is, litigation, subject matters, that I want a chain of command, I want to know how those emails are being released, I want to know who's giving what, so that if there's any breach of confidentiality, we know where that breach of confidentiality is coming from. Am I making that clear?
Yeah, absolutely. If history, listen, if history predicts the future, everything regarding your employees will be out in public, okay? That's why we'll take this up in the morning, and I believe that it's within my executive powers to decide what we do on this matter, okay?
Well, no, I just want a chain of command, so that if there is a breach of confidentiality runs, whatever email...
So you're directing her not to give me information that I'm entitled to?
I didn't say that.
No, the mayor said that, he's going to bring it up tomorrow morning.
We will deal with it.
What does that mean?
Does anybody else have anything to say?
We need to put a system in to ensure that if there is a breach of confidentiality, we know where it's coming from.
I only wish that you had a fraction of the questions on the budget, when we were doing the budget, as you do right now, regarding this.
I didn't have a question.
You really had nothing, okay? You had no participation, so that says, that speaks volumes.
I need to know now, Mayor, that are you directing the Borough Administrator not to give me information that I'm entitled to?
Councilwoman Park, you need nothing. You need nothing, you need nothing now, okay? Look, there's a third thing.
He did not say that at all.
Here's the third thing.
I brought up to make sure a chain of command is set and confidentiality is not breached. Please, stop playing for the camera, Ellen.
I am not, I don't know what you're talking about. Oh, my God.
Excuse me, we're going to move on, this, this, the second matter, the mayor will address it, and then there needs to be a report back and a figuring out of what's going to happen. Or at some point, a vote, Mayor, you got to figure out something, whether we, you're going to allow her to spend the hours, maybe she needs to estimate the hours, I don't know. There has to be something in place for confidentiality material. Not everything is confidential, however.
Not everything, just a special piece.
So the determination of what is confidential and what isn't is problematic, because it involves attorney time.
Well, he is going to pay for that cost, and it's not going to be the tax.
Okay.
It's not the tax, Paris.
I understand. The third point, I believe that I have answered this question, I went back and forth with it, Councilwoman Park at one point, then after I gave the legal opinion and the statutes and the Borough Code to explain and to back up the explanation, Councilwoman Park then asked the planning board attorney if he agreed with me. Suffice to say that I stopped that, because no one of the individual council members should be consulting with all of our professionals on an individual basis, when you've already consulted the Borough Attorney, who you may not have faith in, but you're really not authorized as an individual to go and expend additional funds in that way. I invite everyone to contact with me in my reign over, in my, in my job over the next six months, and work with me, and, you know, if you don't agree with me, tell me, et cetera, et cetera, but to just like in, to open up a whole nother review with another attorney would not have been appropriate, he responded appropriately. My question at this point is, is there any question in anyone's mind as to whether or not any of the planning board members are improperly appointed?
No, that wasn't the question, whether there was a conflict or not.
There is no conflict of interest in the appointment. Conflicts of interest do not occur in the appointment. He is a Borough employee, he works in the building department, he's entitled to be the Class Two Board Member. If he has a conflict of interest, which I have told this council, members of this council individually, and many other Borough and Public employees along the way, a conflict of interest has to be analyzed under the particular circumstances of the factual scenario presented. If JP Lee has a conflict with the applicant, I'm sorry, building official, you know, I'm not talking about personnel matters. If JP Lee has a conflict with an applicant, I am sure he will refuse himself, because he is not acting as a Borough employee when he's sitting on the board. He is a board member, he's entitled to vote.
So, all right, so here, here, here it is, counsel, you're part of a council, which is a body, you have no executive power unless it's delegated to you specifically by the council. So it's like a board member of a corporation, board members cannot act alone, they have to ask, act as a corporate body of a board. You cannot just pick up the phone and start dealing with affairs of the town without getting approval. And I'll tell you one more reason why you shouldn't do that, it exposes you to personal liability, because now you're acting outside of the scope of your authority, so proceed with your own peril.
Okay.
But, Mayor, I don't think you're discouraging any of us from going around and inquiring information, I mean, I don't think that's what you mean.
I would say, don't, don't.
I know, I'm just making it clear to everybody.
If you do that, we're going to send you the bill and reimburse the town.
I'm just trying to say this.
No, it's happening, and I suggest everybody reflect on who they are, you're part of a council, okay? You're not acting individually.
I'm not acting individually.
Yes, you are.
I am acting on behalf of...
It doesn't matter what you say now, you cannot unring the bell that you rang, okay?
I don't plan to unring the bell.
Okay, all right, anything else from anybody in new business? Okay, motion for adjourned, please.
We're in session.
Oh, Police Committee report for...
William.
We didn't vote on it, we didn't vote on it, we're still, we're still in session. Sorry, William.
Yeah, on the Police Committee, on May twenty-fourth and May thirty-first, we met with Chief Chaffee and Chief Tramones, respectively, and we will be putting together a role and responsibility for the Public Safety Director position. a role and responsibility for the public safety director position, that's what came out of the meeting. I'm going to be working on that with the police committee and, and our administrator, Catherine. June twenty-fifth, Englewood Cliffs Fire Department having a, is having a pancake breakfast, just want to inform the public of that. And Mark, I apologize for not making it to the recycle fest, I heard it was a terrific success, thank you for that.
No problem.
Zach, give him a...
That's it.
To adjourn.
Second.